Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Wu? Chair Pro Tem Crandall?
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
Chair Rowland?
Absent. City Planner Cora?
And Kaczynski? He's here?
He's here.
Kind of not working. It's a little dark. Little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Audio, better visual looks good.
Okay, so this is fantastic. Brave new world, right?
Sit in.
So, what we've got tonight on tap for a study is the this is the adjourned regular meeting of the study session of the planning commission for the city of Sacramento, California for Wednesday, June 30th, 5 o'clock. And our item tonight is is the lot consolidation ordinance. That would be our item to discuss. We've done roll call. So, Mr. Weber, would you like to begin the presentation?
Yes, good afternoon, Planning Commission. So, for the lot consolidation study session, I'm going to be going over the staff report in lieu of a PowerPoint. And so, this update to the law consolidation ordinance is just kind of pertaining to the recommendations that you gave at the initial study session for law consolidation on April 22nd. And so, we did our best to incorporate everything that you recommended and we addressed some of the comments and concerns throughout the law consolidation ordinance as well. So, on the first page of the staff report is more or less the same, which was from the initial submittal, except we talk about affected parcels. I think Commissioner Crandall mentioned that some of the parcels were incorrect and some that were either being developed or that were looking to be developed. And so, we removed 2801 South El Camino Real from the analysis, but ultimately kept the other lots because nothing has been approved for development, even though there might be some conceptual development or some selling going on for the case of for this study session. We're keeping it in the analysis until there's an approved construction. And so, the incentives that are provided, nothing has changed. We have updated some concerning the recommendations that you gave, but we haven't added or taken away any of the incentives. Moving on to page two of the staff report, we do provide an analysis of the number of housing that law consolidation ordinance may provide us in terms of affordable housing. This analysis is just an example of what will be expanded upon when we bring it to planning commission as an item. And so, this paragraph here is just an excerpt of what is actually going to be provided, but it does explain the number of affordable housing that we can get that are in the city from introducing law consolidation ordinance. Also, on page two, we have an example. The commissioners last time really wanted to see example of how we'll do this. And so, here we're looking at the image here shows law consolidation for 1633 Calle Las Polas and the surrounding parcels that are vacant undeveloped on Calle Colina. And so, what this example is showing is if we look at the table below the image, we're seeing four different scenarios. The first scenario is if the lots are developed separately, which would give us a total of 20 units. The second scenario is if they're consolidated without any provided incentives or without the law consolidation ordinance. Third example, the third scenario is if we had consolidation with the provided density bonus and incentives and what number of affordable units we may get from that. And then, the fourth scenario is a combined density bonus, which would be the law consolidation bonus and the state density bonus. And we can go over this a little more if anyone has questions about that. And so, in the example that's shown, the total units column in the table is developing with a combined density bonus as previously mentioned, and it offers developers more units with additional concessions and incentives and possibly generates more or the same amount of affordable units for the city regardless if the developer pursues the affordable state density bonus. When this goes to the planning commission, it's planned that we would be able to show this example for all the parcels. And so, we can compare what exactly this will look like in the total number of units for all the consolidated parcels that we're looking at and which are listed in the residential site inventory list. Going on to page three, we provided a little example. I know Commissioner Wu really wanted to understand better how the number of affordable units would be calculated with a combined law consolidation and state density bonus. And the goal here was just to show that if we're looking at a state density bonus in combination with law consolidation, both scenarios would have to be fulfilled. So, going back up to the example on page two, we see that for the state density bonus, the number four, the fourth scenario, the developer would have to provide either two very low income or four low income units. And if they provided only two very low income units, they would still have to comply with the three affordable units for law consolidation. So, they would have to provide at the minimum three units. And so, going back to page three, we provided, I think Commissioner Crandall really wanted to see kind of a walkthrough of what this looked like. And so, we provided a just kind of a walkthrough that shows like from the beginning, someone applies for a project for law consolidation, what they'll need to do, and it kind of walks through the incentives that they can use. And then, it shows a city planner determines minimum standards are met before it goes to now a required architectural review by DRC. And then, the last steps would be reviewed by the zoning administrator for approval, which would also be approved with all the necessary permits that are required for that project. And so, for changes to the ordinance, they're provided as track changes in attachment four. These are just track changes to what has changed since you previously saw on the 22nd in April. And to make it easier, what just I will kind of bullet it out here, what has changed. So, now we're required architectural review. I know that was important in order to, for a number of reasons, I know height came up. And so, this would give a chance to look at the height when designs come in, if we want any kind of discretion over that. Now, all necessary development and use permits require zoning administrator approval with the necessary standard findings. We also show clarification on meeting required number of affordable units, what I just talked about previously. And then, we addressed some of the more specific concerns that Commissioner Wu had with parking, clarification on non-residential parking and residential parking. We removed residential far bonus. And now, we're also amending the others findings for the permits that would be required, such as now law consolidation. Instead of going to planning commission, we would be able to streamline it to go to zoning administrator for something like a site plan permit. And so, as when we look at the other lots that are considered, we have as attachment five potential for law consolidation table that kind of goes through all the lots and what they would look like for consolidation. If we have questions about that table, we can go over that too. So, this concludes staff's presentation. And just looking for feedback before we draft for a planning commission.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown, I have one comment if I could. Your Blackwell?
Absolutely, yes.
I touched on it Kyle last time. Is on page 17, mixed use on your additional height table 1724 to 30. Mixed use in neighborhood commercial. You're allowing 37 feet to plate 45 feet top of roof, three stories. And that's the one area I have concern about. I don't know the other commissioners, but every time we pop up about 35 feet or two large stories in this town, things can get heated. And that's, I think I mentioned that, I guess it didn't take hold, but is this in the state side of the ordinance that came down that for height and density, do we have to live with 30, 45 feet for neighborhood commercial and mixed use?
So, we do not have to live with that incentive. So, in the state density bonus, there is potential for a developer to propose a height increase, and that could be one of their incentives for a concession to changes in development standards. So, I did keep it in there because some of the majority, maybe not the majority, but at least half of the lots we're looking at are in mixed use zones or neighborhood commercial. And so, I kept it in there, but I kept it in there because it is an important incentive to have in order to reach the density. But I included an architectural review in order to have discretion over that. But if we need to remove that, or if we're in the understanding that we do want to remove that from law consolidation, I'm personally worried that it wouldn't create the number of units that we want. However, we're not stuck with that and we can remove it.
What's the commission sense on this? I'm just, this is Chair Crandall. Michael, can I?
Absolutely. Jump right in.
Kyle, good job responding to our request and Don's correct. There's a, there was a lot of discussion and all where going above the 35 to 45 affected views from the freeway of the ocean. I mean, that's not even a view corridor, but very heated discussions for a long period of time. And I think we've got to make sure that for particular lots, because we're starting with these lots, but lots like you say can be added or taken away from this document. And if some lots get added, we're going to need to be able, I think, to review the height. And we don't protect views, but it was an image of the city that was at risk there of seeing the ocean from the freeway. So, I think we need to, and being usually our mixed use are in transition zones between commercial, then mixed use, then residential, and they didn't want 45 feet immediately adjacent to the residential. So, those would be my comments, pretty much in concert with Don's comments. In fact, if I could follow on that particular project that caused such consternation was 1010 South El Camino Real, which is just being completed right now. It's under construction. You can go down Kyle and look at it. And we ultimately passed about a 35 foot top of roof consideration with council, brutal with council call up. And they called it up and didn't, disallowed it, didn't give them the extra two feet. And so, we had to stuff the roof in there and the equipment well is a cavity now. And so, now here we have this project on El Camino Real just finishing up and not even allowed to go to 35 feet. And if we allow by right in the zoning ministry review to go to 45 feet, neighborhood commercial slash residential like this table is, that exceeds what this guy was denied. And it's going to be, I just, it's going to be a political hotbed, and I don't think we need to go there because now you're giving something for a zoning minimum approval. Actually, council denied a guy that's just finishing his project right now.
Yes, so if I may, I may add to Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Crandall's comments on that particular item. I think that our interest is in avoiding any, you know, we're not trying to protect unprotected views, but we are concerned with the visual experience as we have been for a very long time. And in doing so, you know, that potential canyonization of the streetscape is something we're concerned with. Addressing the change in character to the streetscape, these are all things that, you know, we should be and I think can be concerned with, should be. So, I would share that concern as well and suggest that, you know, any sort of deviation like this from, in an area that could be a problem, should certainly come back to us for review, you know, in the public forum so that there's an opportunity for, you know, some Q and A, some thorough examination of the, you know, the big picture. That would be my thought as well. Anybody else have a comment? Of course, yes.
I just wanted to say that I think that's a really justifiable concern. And so, going forward, if we were to remove that incentive, I'm wondering if I could get some feedback on what an alternative might be if there's other lots we may want to consider if we're going to remove that incentive from these lots. Maybe there's a solution to it or a way that we can still provide the number of, or close to the number of units this is attempting to by allowing the incentive in other areas of the city that are close to public transit. And if we don't have feedback on that, that's fine. I'm just, I'm asking just in case someone has an idea.
Kyle? Commissioner Wu? Absolutely.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Wu. Kyle, if I may, just to this topic, I share the concern from other commissioners. I think especially for the building height, I'm not against offering a potential incentive on building height, but I think we should retain that review authority with the planning commission. So, we can review this sensitive issue on a public forum. I won't exclude any possibility that they've got a concession on building height because any applicant, if they come to the city and they say they want to build some density bonus, they are entitled to some concessions depending on how much units they offer. Height limit is one of them, so we're going to offer them possibility. But we have carefully reviewed it and that review body should be planning commission. I don't feel that to concentrate that discretionary review to a single individual or zoning administrator would do justice to this big issue.
Anybody else like to comment on that particular item?
Well, I mean, yeah, if you leave it in there, some developer is going to come in and he's going to want to try for it. And I don't know how much it affects your numbers Kyle, but look at this, you know, the other zone, a part of your briefing, it's an example there. I know it's a pretty good cut, but this 1010 South El Camino Real, it's been five years in the making, but it Commissioner Wu, you were there, I was there, Crandall was there, Mike, you were there, okay?
Initially, yes.
And it was three or four sessions and they got called up to council and they got brutal up there too. It was it was, it was just a really tough sell and it never did sell. In other words, he didn't even get 35 feet. And so, Kyle, I'm just trying to tell you that for you, the staff member, as you try to execute this in the future, you know, you're the ones that are walking across the coals barefooted, you know what I mean? And it's, it's your smell, the flesh you smell burning is your soles of your feet along whoever at staff meetings trying to pull this through. And it's going to be, it's going to be difficult. And that's why if it's there, somebody's going to be interested in 45 feet. I know that looking at that chart and then your staff briefing and what those lots do, I know it drives a big number for you. But on your option for allowable state affordable state density bonus 3230 with total 34 units, I don't know, is that including the heights in there, 45 feet? For your calculation?
So, one of the so one of the calculations that would be missing from this is the size of units that we would have on these lots with or without increased setbacks or increased height. And that's something that will take a lot of, I mean, that's a pretty complicated calculation for it.
I understand a lot of calculations there, and this is a gross net that you're trying to make the state HCD happy with, with our housing element. It's how many, how many fingers and how many thumbs? And I understand all that numbers game we play with Sacramento. It's just that I just know four of us have had the recent experience of this particular height type thing in a neighborhood commercial environment, one alleyway across from residential. And it filled the room and it was three or four planning commission sessions and a very heated city council session and the guy, and the applicant got denied. And that's just where I'm coming from. Where's the, where's the rest of the commission?
Well, I can, I'd like to just comment on that briefly. I again echo that sentiment and concern and just more reason why we should and concern and just more reason why we should really apply, you know, careful discretion over, over something like this, not, you know, to Commissioner Wu's point, not, you know, rejecting this opportunity to an applicant. You know, we're not taking this opportunity away from a potential developer, but we are, you know, expressing concern, you know, looking at the whole thing as, as, you know, more big picture, to make sure that there's proper integration with the built environment. It's a good fit. But my question, Kyle, would be, you know, in terms of meeting arena numbers, I mean, if we're, we have, we have these, this inventory list, and there was a comment before, I believe by myself, last discussion on this, where I asked, you know, what if, you know, not to say, you know, we couldn't identify other properties in town, maybe we could, but what if others were to come in and they have a lot that meets the most basic standards of this, you know, this criteria here? Couple lots come in and they want to do something like this. I mean, are we going to reject that opportunity? Are we going to, are we going to deprive others from the same sort of, you know, vehicle we're providing in other parts of town?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. And I struggled with that too. I know that other cities that I looked at with lot consolidation ordinances, all they required was lots to be consolidated and a certain width of the lot, the ultimate lot width, maybe 90 feet or such. And that's all they required. And in this case, I tried to keep this conservative because the housing action plan and the housing element, this particular program, just called for the sites listed on the residential list. And I don't see a problem with expanding that to certain areas. And that may give more leeway into not allowing height increases in the areas where we don't want, but allowing these, these developments somewhere else in the city. But, yeah, I, I think there's, there's potential to do it, but we kept it just in line with what's in the housing element for now.
Understood. Okay. Well, that's good to know. Of course, that would be a side discussion or ongoing discussion in that area. But if we were to look at the inventory that we're considering now, and we've identified, you know, X, X amount of parcels that would require this, you know, exception to increase the height, potentially negatively impact, we just don't know. We haven't looked at it yet. But we've met the minimum number. Wouldn't it be a good idea to have some surplus so that we could still meet our number in the event that even if it's at the zoning level, even if a finding can't be made and the project could not be approved, are we now, you know, are we, are we stuck with, you know, that minimum number not being able to meet it because we couldn't make a finding to support an increased height? So question is, wouldn't it be a good idea to look at, to continue looking for other opportunities to add to our list?
I think that's a really good point. Yeah, I think that's a really good point. And I don't have an answer.
Well, otherwise we're, I mean, why even talk about it then? Because if we're going to be so strict to this, this number, then it's an, then it's got to be a yes every time. I mean, what's the point? Right?
I'll throw this out if I may, Mr. Blackwell, for the commission consideration. Because, Kyle, I think the ordinances you've got it right now is, is good to go except for this one issue as far as I'm concerned. Now, right now, you've got always at a, basically a discretionary review at most zoning administrator, and that's fine. You know, most of it below that. You know, would the commission consider that one paragraph, one chapter, allow us to go to 45 feet? And put the words in there, subject to planning commission and ultimately or where it affects city council approval. In other words, put those words in there so the staff know two years from now, whoever, Kyle, that, and whoever's on the planning commission, that you want to go to 45 feet in this town, you just, you have a very tall, high chinning bar. And so I would throw, way up in the discretionary reviews, what I'm suggesting, something worthy of discussion. That helps you, Kyle, make your numbers easier just because the, the number's in there. But the caveat's in the box there that the applicant's got to go to a very high level of review. Over to the commission for discussion.
That might be a solution.
Okay. Michael, this is Bart Crandall chiming in real quick. Kyle, either my short-term memory is going bad or it's not here. What is the process to add additional lots to this inventory? Is it simple?
To the, the sites inventory list?
Yes.
Okay. So the site inventory list was part of the housing element, and they just looked at undeveloped, underdeveloped, or vacant lots in the city. And so these lots are part of that list. And they're in like the coastal area, the affordable housing overlay or anything somewhat around the five. And so if we wanted to, so like adding to the sites residential, the residential sites inventory list is different, but we could always add to the list that I'm providing here in the staff report. Like we could always add to this.
Because we've got a lot of vacant units that are in mixed use zones. And if they're underutilized now, people could take and purchase two, three adjacent lots in a mixed use zone, apply for this. And if one of the incentives is maybe they don't have to have commercial on the first floor, is that an incentive or is that something they could look at?
We can make that an incentive.
Because I think there are maybe some cases where we've zoned things mixed use and maybe we've got more pedestrian commercial than necessary in the future. I'm not saying it would be by right, but that's something they could ask for. That might be a way of increasing your residential unit numbers.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay.
That's a very good point, Bart.
Kyle, this is Commissioner Wu. I have a few comments on the report. I recall one, somewhere you said, the lot consolidation must, must result in a lot with some minimum standard, or one of the standard that the site, the average site grade is less than 20%. But I'm looking at your page two, the five lots at the intersection of Calle Las Bolas and Calle Colina. Those are steep, those are steep lots. They're probably steeper than 20%. So if you, if you leave that there, the strict enforcement of that requirement will prevent this from getting consolidated. Another comment is on La Ronda. A while ago, we, planning commission approved a multifamily project on La Ronda. That is your attachment two, top right corner image. There are three flagship site, flagship lot, the one immediately next to the Boys and Girls Club. What is the status of that lot? You still included this on the inventory.
So I did look at these lots and I did not see that anything was approved for development. Maybe they're approved for permits through, through the planning staff or division, but building permits have not been pulled or submitted. And I think Jonathan Lightfoot was working on this project. And so in that circumstance, that is the only reason I would have kept something in here if construction wasn't approved yet. But you're right, this may be removed from the list.
And then, I don't know about a building permit, but planning commission approved it with the conditional use permit. Now, your requirement that they, the minimum number of affordable housing meet state requirement and the city requirement may have unintended consequence that is medium low income housing, but discourage people from providing very low income housing. Because to meet the state requirement, for example, in order to get the 20% density bonus, applicant needs to provide a 10% medium low or 5% low. But since we also ask them to meet the city minimum requirement, a lot of time that number is higher than the number to meet the very low income housing unit. So they have to, they have to choose medium low units instead of very low income housing unit. So I wonder if that's some, somehow we, we will figure out a way to avoid that. We, we certainly want them to have both type of units. I understand that we, in our requirement, we said out of 50% of the baseline, 15 needs to be very low and 35 to be, to be low. But that's something to, to, to look at. Also, the, the initial city council's direction is to, to look at substandard lots. And when they, when they consolidated it, and figure out a way to improve the, to, to meet the housing need. Some of the lots we're talking about here, they are not substandard. Many are, but some are not. And the last time we talked about, do we, do we make them qualify for those incentive too? Or do we even make a lot that's, that's standard, nothing nonconforming, but by itself, do we make them eligible for this incentive without any consolidation? Or if we already have two lots, each will meet the minimum lot standard when they combine. They're not substandard lots, but, but this proposed code will, will let them to take that incentive. So, so that's, I think, no, we, we kind of deviate a little bit from the city council's direction because we call them underdevelopment, underutilized lots. That's a little different from substandard. It's, it's, it's a good policy to, to encourage the, the creation of affordable housing. We just want to make sure that, that this is the direction from the city council. I think we have another, another comment about your, oh, oh, you gave an applicant four options when they face a, a boundary of smaller lots next to each other. They can develop them individually. They can do a lot consolidation and develop them on a, on a single larger lot without any incentive. They can ask the city to give them incentive at the same time they provide some affordable housing per city requirements without attacking the state density bonus program. Or they can do a combination of city incentive and a state density program. But I think one thing we, we missed here is that do they have the option to, to utilize the state density bonus program alone without, without having the city incentive? It may, it may be moot. I, I don't know, but a lot of time with all this rounding up and down, there could be a slight difference. We don't know, but I think we ought to give them, give them that option if they don't want to take advantage of the, the city incentive, just to go with a state incentive. Let me give you an example. On attachment five, page 20, the last example, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven small lots there. They add up to, to about one acre. So if I understand correctly, your number goes, based, based on the, the underlying density, maximum density of 36 multiplied by the site area, you get a 33.48. And we round it down to 33. So they're allowed to build 33 if they consolidated. And, but they don't want to provide any affordable housing, 33. If they want to take advantage of the city incentive, we say you get a 20, 25% bonus. That gives you 41.85. Again, you say you rounded it down, so that's 41. So they got to, they get to build eight more units, assuming they provide 50% of that extra affordable. Now, you showed me five. I'm not like a hundred, if you subtract 33.48 from 41.85, that gives you a little over five. And because you're rounding up, so you're asking them to provide five affordable units. From an applicant's standpoint, they can build 33 by right. They want to provide affordable housing per city incentive. They, they need to, they can build up to 41. That's eight extra, eight additional. You're asking them to provide five, that's different from, they would understand that out of eight, they would have to provide four affordable. We're asking them for five. And that's caused from the, the way we round them number or whether we round them before we calculate the, the affordable housing unit or, or we calculate the affordable housing unit required after we round it. So there's slight difference there. If they have the choice to go for a state density, and they can provide the minimum amount of affordable housing, say 5% very low or 10% low, and they get a 20, 20% of the density bonus, they would end up with 40 point something. Because state density bonus lets them to round up, they can build 41. Happened to be the same number as, as a city, as a city number, 41. But per state density bonus, they would, they would be required to provide 5% of original baseline, which in case, in this case would be 33.48. And that results two. And then we run up, that results two very low or four low density or four low income. And that will, so, so you see this sometime, depending on the number and where the threshold is, they can have slightly different number. You know, every one unit matter for their performer and a financial bottom line. So I think we ought to give them the option to take advantage of state density bonus program alone without a city. It's just give them another option so they can compare those numbers.
Okay. This is Bart Crandall again, Kyle. I just want to have, make sure that you take a look at, developers and builders are pretty savvy investors and, you know, they're in it to, to make a buck. And since we're doing a lot consolidation, which is eliminating a property line and all the verbiage you put into this document, does that preclude or keep them from having the option of getting a condo map so they could be for sale units rather? It sounds, everything we're talking about sounds like rental, rental, rental. But that's not necessarily the case. Maybe the only, the low cost ones are rental and the, the others are for sale. And I want to make sure that this doesn't preclude those options or allow them to be creative and take one of those options.
Okay. Can I, can I, I'm kind of wondering if I can respond to all of those and just kind of get an idea. I'm kind of looking for a response from both Commissioner Wu or all the commissioners, but also Crandall on their questions. If you don't mind. So going back to the slope, that is a requirement from Public Works for certain reasons. It's also in their, their lot merger ordinance. And I'm wondering if that's an issue in terms of cost, if they can do grading to mitigate that issue for like a 20% grade. I don't, I think that you might be right. It might be above 20%, but I don't think maybe in that case, it would go above 30. It might be above 20%, but I don't think maybe in that case it would go above 30. So I wonder if grading would help that? Or from your experience with development in the city, if that's usually not an, an ending choice for a developer, if they'd rather just not do any kind of grading? And then, so percent of affordable units for, let's see, not, not reaching, let's see. So if I go back up to the seven lots that Commissioner Wu mentioned and we're looking at, I think he pointed out pretty well, like rounding up, rounding down, getting different numbers. And the way I started calculating this is how can we, how can we show that there's opportunity to provide lot consolidation with incentives and let a developer do what they want, but also make the, the combination with the state density bonus look more enticing? And so if they do lot consolidation, they can provide this number of units, but just with a little bit more and maybe one really important incentive that they need or want, we will end up getting additional affordable units and they'll have more units as well. And so I think that the way it's set up is, it's not like a gotcha, but it's also to show that if you're going to do lot consolidation, you may, you almost may as well just do a combined. And that way you'll get more incentives and will get more affordable units. That was the idea, and I think there needs to be more analysis in these numbers. I agree with that, but I'm wondering if you see how that works in that scenario? And substandard lots, I talked to Public Works about this, and they're, they're kind of wondering if the substandard lots, if they're not really enticing or developable and if they do develop on these substandard lots, there's nothing to consolidate, you know, we're looking at maybe one unit or two units. And if someone builds two units and they just get like a five foot reduction setbacks and one of them has to be affordable, it might not be worth it for them to do that. But I think you're right, it would be good to look at all the substandard lots that either need to be, I know the engineering department has mentioned they want those substandard lots to merge with their, their connecting parcels for reasons just to have them not lingering as substandard. And so there might need to be some more communication with engineering with the substandard lots. Let's see. And then the last one for rent and for sale, I haven't played around with that yet, but I think that's really important and that should be addressed. And I'll, I'll try to address how that will work in the new update ordinance.
Yes, it's very important to track that because I think in our last updates, we've lost some, there was, they got sold. And then somehow it dropped through the, the cracks and they got resold again and they felt, slipped out from underneath the whole housing umbrella. And we lost inventory out of that. I think Mr. Crandall made a very good point.
Kyle, this is Commissioner Wu, if I may. I want to touch on another two topics. The first is FAR bonus. In your, in your document on page 16, underneath the FAR bonus. The language is just not clear because for, for, for anyone who see FAR bonus, their understanding is, okay, you're going to let me build a little more. That, that's their first reaction. But what, what it really is, is not, and also it reads the minimum non-residential floor error ratio allowed in a zone for mixed use project may be modified by the amount listed below. The, so the amount here shows, shows the minimum of .2 FAR. Normally we ask the commercial portion of a mixed use to be .3 FAR. So it's not an additional .2 FAR, .2 FAR to make it a .5. It's not a reduction of .2 to make it a .1. Really, it is change that .3 to this .2 number. So I'd like to just to clear the language to, so people understand clearly that we are relaxing the minimum commercial portion FAR requirement on mixed use project to make it easier because a lot of time, they don't want to build a lot of commercial space because they're difficult to lease out. And they, they think it's more profitable to build residential on top of the retail instead of having a lot of retail space. So, so the term that FAR bonus and it's not clear here called people some confusion and, and the wording be modified is not precise because modified can be anyway, it can be addition, can be subtraction. So we, we just better just to make it clear. So we relaxed this, this requirement, that's one. Another topic goes back to the discretionary review by zoning administrator. If the intent of the whole proposed lot consolidation and its incentive is to promote affordable housing, then I, I would like to see our tracker record of our zoning administrator, seriously. I want to see what has there in the past couple of years from beginning of her term and what, what she has done to make affordable housing happen in the city. Because when we concentrate that discretionary review power to one single individual, that individual can, has all the discretion to approve or deny this project, then depending on her position on affordable housing, she can make it work really well or she can block it, who knows? We want to see what happens here. And I, I want to understand her position on affordable housing before I would support that the planning, planning commission give up this discretionary review power to zoning administrator. Thanks.
Michael, we can't hear you. You're, you're on mute.
I'm so sorry. Thank you very much for letting me know. So, you know, my, my comment is on FAR bonus as well. And so the red line shows the maximum and has been stricken and we're, we're maintaining minimum not, non-residential FAR allowed in the zone and so on. Are, this is a bonus, we're talking bonus, are we not increasing the maximum allowed? So we have an upper limit for what is allowed in a zone? And this bonus opportunity here would be to increase the maximum? Am I just, am I not reading this right? It's just, it appears to me that we want to, we're offering a bonus to the maximum allowed. So any minimum would still have room for, for movement. You know, why even apply a bonus? It's undefined within that movement between minimum and maximum. So why are we, why don't we just maintain the maximum language and strike minimum instead? Could you explain that?
Sure. So I, I agree that the word bonus is misleading. And so I agree that it should be reworded, this, this portion of the incentives could literally be one sentence. And so I agree with your concerns. And so I also had some confusion about minimum and maximum for commercial portion and we, staff talked about how we'll, we'll, talked about how this should go. And it was explained to me that because developers want more residential space in mixed use zones, having the minimum FAR for commercial lowered provides them that space. And allowing a maximum in, in increase or keeping the maximum the same or giving an increase doesn't really provide an incentive or for us to provide the number of units that we want. If, yeah, I guess I'm having trouble articulating this, but the idea is to lower the minimum so they can provide less commercial and more residential units, in short.
Right. And that makes sense, but would it be cleaner? Because what we don't want to do is have code that's just so darn complicated that folks don't understand it. And it's, it's best to, in my opinion, to, you know, leave the legalese and details to legal to interpret if necessary, but our code should be clear. So why don't we just have something that says, you know, under FAR bonus, that the non-residential FAR allowed in the zone, not call it minimum or maximum, it's just the FAR that's allowed, period. And, and that will change by zone, right? So, you know, if we're in a different zone, there'll be a different number.
Correct? That's good input. Yes, correct.
All we can just say, and the relief of a minimum FAR requirement or MU zone or something like that.
And Kyle, I just have one question. On page 10, on authority, you deleted the zoning administrator has a discussion to refer to. Can you explain that?
Sorry, I was on mute. So I'm going to page 10. You cut out a little bit there, so you said on page 10, I removed authority.
Yeah, the authority, number B. The portion that's striked out about the zoning administrator's discretion to refer a request to the planning commission.
So it says for review and final action.
Yeah.
So I think the idea was because we're adding architectural review as a requirement that we would keep it zoning administrator. Yeah, I don't see why we can't keep that. There was no like special intent to remove it.
Sometimes that's useful and several years ago, we had a city planner that used that to his advantage when a, an application came in and was going to be politically sensitive. He pulled that lever and threw it up to us just to give himself a little breathing room there because he knew that would be, it was a sensitive discussion either a part of town. So leaving that particular phrase in is oftentimes something that the building administrator can use to their calendar. And proceeding through, sort of administrators slash city planners couldn't back use that a lot.
Right, good to know. Thank you.
And also, you know, getting back to the comment on height, you know, we had discussion on that and whether or not an increase beyond allowable height in a particular area, you know, reaches the, you know, what the, what the code says. If it's going to come to planning commission, then that review authority language should be adjusted accordingly. You know, so there'd be exceptions, in other words. So there'd be a, you know, a blurb on, on exceptions, right?
So just, I know we need to wrap up here pretty soon, but I'm wondering if, if I could keep the, maybe retract that sentence that, you know, giving the, giving the zoning administrator the power to refer to the planning commission, keep that in there. But when this goes to planning commission, if everyone would be okay if we kept the zoning administrator as approval, but in the, the recommendations to planning commission, give them the option to change that to planning commission and just write it out plainly for you at the planning commission meeting, that, that is an option?
Right, but again, unless there's, you know, opposition across the board here, I think we, general consensus is that we definitely, you know, we may have situations where it would, might, it might be a benefit to the community to have certain projects come up to the commission for review, specifically, you know, increases the height in those zones where we would exceed the allowable, current allowable height just to meet the density bonus. We still have, you know, responsibility to review entirety of the project as it fits into the built environment. So we're looking, you know, for, you know, proper fit into the streetscape, right? So we want to, we want to see these things when they're, I thought that was the general consensus of the commission. If that's changed, if not, then we should have, add a caveat or a line in, in the review authority that addresses exceptions.
Michael, this is Bart Crandall again. Real quick, any chance that we can put in a, to solve that issue, put in the, planning commission has a right to call it up if it's decided by the zoning administrator?
That would be one way. We did that before, didn't we? We asked for that before. We just have, we just need advance notice to make sure that we have proper time, you know, keep it fair to the applicant.
Every time we tried to put a call up into the city ordinance or the general plan, we had a staff resistance because it actually requires the city ordinance change by the city council. The city council has all the call authorities right now. So we've never been able to pull that off in the 10 years I've been in this thing. And the problem, once again, is span time. In other words, as soon as we see something and zoning administrator makes a call, we see the minutes somehow, we say, no, we want to call it up. Then the clock resets and you're automatically about a four, five or six week before it gets re-agendized to us and back up. So there's always been a big resistance to that. So I, I don't know if we can, and it would take a requirement because the city council has the call up.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
It's just tough to pull off. I mean, I know Bart's asking for it, but I think it's, it's not as easy. Inserted into this thing, it also takes a city ordinance change.
Yes, we don't want to, we don't want to defeat the incentive here. I mean, this is the point of it. But I'm just uncomfortable because we're meeting our minimum REIT numbers. I just think if we had a surplus, as we've been discussing, there'd be some comfort there. Because in the event that we're at our upper limit on these, on these identified parcels and, you know, we have, we have one that gets developed and it creates some significant impact to the community or the street that it's on, that's a problem for me because we don't have, we don't have anywhere else to go. It's, it has to be a yes, right? I mean, otherwise we, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. So I'd be more comfortable if we had a comfortable surplus. Otherwise, you know, those properties identified that would likely need an increase in height to meet, to meet that density number, I mean, we can't do anything with it. So, so I think there should be some language in there. If we can't, if we don't have a bonus of inventory, then if we, if we do have a bonus, then I'm comfortable with, you know, I'd be comfortable with that, with what Bart had suggested. But if we don't have a bonus, then our hands are tied.
This is Commissioner Wu.
And we should look at it.
Commissioner Wu here. I, for that, the planning commission retaining the review authority. You know, we keep doing that until a, if this type of project has been normalized, has been processed, that we don't feel the discretionary level of planning commission is necessary, then we can just change it again to. At this moment, I think the reviewing authority needs to stay with the planning commission.
I think that's general consensus. So I think there's a, there's a way to, an easy way to write that in. So understood. Thank you for responding to that.
Especially, we're proposing something that's, that can have very big impact to the building, such as a building height and et cetera, so.
So just to throw this out there, so it does come to planning commission. We don't have any surplus and we decided to find these can't be met and we say deny it. So we say no, and now we've limited, we've put a limitation on our inventory that's already constrained because we don't have surplus. So I think the surplus is important.
And the inventory is always going to be constrained. We have new numbers assignments coming downstream from state, this bag, and those numbers are about ready to launch onto us right now. They're going to increase our requirements by several hundred units in various categories. Is that right, Kyle? There's, you know, Sacramento's trying to fix all this stuff. The, the inventory question is not going to get better.
Well, there's another update of a housing element and in that update, the inventory will be expanded. That's my understanding.
It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to grow dramatically.
Yeah, otherwise we meet those REIT number.
They're just going out, they're just going out under contract now to start the up, next update with this 2021, which is the eight year schedule. You know, I think where this, this particular ordinance thing that Kyle presented to us, most of it in the zoning administrator I'm comfortable with, give her the option, him the option, boot it up to us. It's just in certain areas like in height where I'd be comfortable leaving. It's just in certain areas like in height where I'd be comfortable leaving in there, but it would require city planning commission review versus zoning administrator if you want to go to 45 feet. The rest of the ordinance could stand. That's kind of my feeling. Throw it back to the commission for discussion.
Anybody else like to comment? So either way, if it's a zoning administrator or a planning commission, if there's a no and we don't have surplus, we take one out, whatever that inventory is, Commissioner Brown, I agree, that number could change. Three million was a pretty aggressive and that's even going to go up in state. It'd be tough, but we have to just work with what our number is today, you know? I mean, we can anticipate growth and that's likely. We all know that we're not making any more land, but we're making a lot more people. And seems like a lot of those people want to be down at the coast. So, I mean, to have surplus, ongoing surplus is, I think, super important here instead of meeting the minimum number, right?
I agree.
Kyle, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I think those are really important components to this. You know, I, I think that expanding what lots are eligible for lot consolidation bonus is, is really a key here. I think that maybe it can just be modified in the future if we keep that in mind. Unless we want to do that now. So I'll make that an option and see what the, see what the other options are for, for what lots we can consider. I think there's a lot of like moving parts to this and, but I don't think it's as complicated as it needs to be. And so, yeah, I think there's, I think there's opportunity to approve this with the most restrictive authority and still be headed in the right direction. And if we need to change it, then we can. I think that's one way to look at it.
Okay. Well, you know, we're, we're after the hour now and I think Commissioner Ruin will be calling in here to start the next meeting. Does anybody have any more questions or, and if not, what would be the next steps? Anybody have any questions? And Kyle, what would be next steps? Questions first. No other questions? So Kyle, what would be the next step for us with this?
So, well, first of all, I just want to say that I really appreciate all the, appreciate all the feedback and I can tell that everyone really cares and wants to see this come out good and useful for the city. So I really, some really, really good feedback. And so the next step would be to provide a more comprehensive staff report, schedule it for planning commission and do a deeper analysis on the other lots that are available and taking the feedback that you gave me today and incorporate it into, into a staff report and an analysis in the new lot, in the draft lot consolidation. I think that also in that analysis, what I, what I think is really important is to get review or outreach by other developers in the city to get their, their feedback on it.
That's an excellent idea. That'd be great. Okay. Any other commissioners comment on this? If not, we can, we can close this up. And would anybody care to take a couple minute break? I know this is a new approach for us with the cameras and everything and all this. Would, would everybody be open for a five minute? Just a personal break and come back at?
That works for me.
Okay, so why don't we do 6:15? And thank you, Kyle, very much. Appreciate this great presentation. Looking forward to good things from this.
Thank you very much.
You bet. And Gabriel, so 6:15, does that sound good? We'll go ahead and reassess until 6:15. We'll start up the commission meeting at that point.
Yeah, I think that works. If that's good with the commission. And just to let you know, what I'm thinking for the planning commission is to consider the industrial hand ordinance. So we'll mention that at the beginning of the meeting. So I assume there's going to be some discussion on that. But let's, let's please start right away because there are a lot of items on the agenda.
Understood. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Chris.
Yeah, how you doing?
Good.
You're at the beach?
Yeah. Where else am I?
You're correct. So black and heavy coffee cup.
It's quite, it's quite damp, that spins on my head. Don and I meet ourselves.
Yeah.
Oh yeah. Meeting, yeah. I always live one of those, well have one.
Okay.
You're only part two.
Looks like we're all here, so I will call to order the planning commission meeting of Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020. Zen, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We have some flags on screen.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands under donation, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Gabriel, could you call the roll, please? So you're on mute, Gabriel?
Yeah. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Chair Pro-Tam Crandall?
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
I'm here.
And Chair Rulman?
Here. Our next item, five, is minutes. Uh, excuse me. We have, um, item four, special order of business. Um, we don't have any. Item five is our minutes. Two minutes to approve. The first is the minutes of the regular study session of May 20th, 2020. Are there changes or a motion?
I move we approve the study session minutes.
Second.
By Crandall.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, do I have to take a roll call, Gabriel? Even though we're all on video? I think I still do, don't I?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so roll call. Um, Commissioner Kaczynski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Uh, passes unanimously. Our next one is minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of May 20th, 2020. Um, there is one small change I have in item B, the second paragraph. Um, the second, the second half of that sentence should be struck. It should only read, Commissioner Kaczynski recused himself from considering this item, period. Because he did return, um, to the meeting after this item. Are there any other, uh, changes or a motion?
I move we approve the, uh, the minutes of the meeting as amended by Chair Rulman.
Second. Blackwell.
Uh, motion by Brown, second by Blackwell. Roll call, Commissioner Kaczynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Uh, passes unanimously. Uh, our next item is oral and written communications. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to scottm1@san-clemente.org. Transmitted by 3:00 PM on planning commission meeting days is recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Gabriel, have we gotten any, um, communications for items that are not on the agenda? I'm sorry, you're on mute, I couldn't hear that.
Apologize. Chairman, there are no other communications.
Very good. Thank you. Um, item seven, the consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar. Uh, item eight is public hearings. Uh, our first item is 8A, uh, and the staff has a report on this item.
Uh, yes, this is David Correia, Assistant Planner. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, earlier this week, on Monday, June 1st, staff received a email from, uh, the applicant, mute dot monitor, requesting that the application be withdrawn. So what that means is that the planning commission does not need to take any action on this item tonight.
And do we need to table this item, or just ignore it?
I'll defer to Gabriel.
Sorry, Gabriel, you just put yourself on mute.
My understanding, Chairman, that there is no action that needs to be taken, since this is a withdrawal item. Um, and if, uh, Mal, if, if you kind of agree with that, too, um, no further actions needed. But we do have comments, and I'm not sure if we need to, um, read those comments on this item, even though it's withdrawn.
I would say no. Yeah.
Well, what does the city attorney say?
Yeah, this is, this is Mal here. Um, this is, this is withdrawn, so there's no need to take action on it. The, the commission certainly can hear those comments, but because it is withdrawn, um, it's no longer a relevant item, so we can also choose to move forward.
Very good. Then, uh, if there are no objections, um, from other members of the committee, go ahead and move forward.
I have a, I have a comment to make, please.
Sure. Please.
Uh, and Mal, I'd like you to really listen in on this, because this is kind of a, a, a sad thing that happens in our system. In other words, the, um, the woman had this application, and she worked on it for a year. The staff worked on it for a year. And when we finally went to public noticing, is where the first time the neighborhood found out about this. And of course, then we had, uh, quite a, uh, uproar, and then of course, a series of emails and DAs. So the lady next door organized and put out a petition that, uh, was pretty telling. And it's really a, a breakdown, I feel, in the Brown Act and the Public Noticing Act now. In other words, this, this lady put a lot of money into it, and then finally, when you get to the 11th hour, we see this a lot, particularly with things on Del Mar and all that. Is, is it appropriate for a recommendation from the commission to go to council? Can we entertain a city amendment to the Brown Act that allows for, encourages, or requires certain applicants as they start the application process to go to our local public noticing, so that the neighborhood in this case is noticed and not surprised when the thing, finally, the victim, we notice them from the ground? We had a similar outbreak, uh, when we did a, a thing on Del Mar a few months ago. And the first time, uh, the historical society and the lady next door to this building, who has an historic building on Del Mar next to the library, found out about it, was the public notice stake was in the ground of the planning commission. So my question to you is, is there some way we can modify the system, so that the staff and the applicant don't, don't go through a year of work and find out this huge resistance without public outreach earlier in this? And that's my question to you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very good question. Um, there is no reason at all that we can't, uh, impose some kind of requirement that, um, the neighbors within a specific radius be notified at the outset of an application. Now, there's, 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 there's always the risk that the application doesn't end up going forward, and so the applicant is spending money that may not be necessary. Um, but that is a risk that can be assumed. So it wouldn't be a, a change to the Brown Act, it would simply be a change to our code that would require certain applications, and you, uh, the commission or council could determine which of those applications would require this, but certain applications to provide early noticing to avoid, like you say, the last minute noticing, which leaves the situations like we had two weeks ago. So nothing that would prevent you from doing that at all, and it is a good practice in some instances.
Have you seen these practices, uh, in some of the other cities that you do business with? Mal, at all, that have this early notification effort? Uh, because I, I guess I could, I could pull out of the air here maybe a dozen, have a dozen to a dozen projects over the last 10 years, where an awful lot of staff time and applicant time goes in, and when we finally get to the public noticing, there's this huge public outcry. It could have been ameliorated, or, you know, the applicant wouldn't have had to, you know, spend a lot of money for noise tests, or whatever, while we try to figure this out. I, I'll throw this out to the commission for some discussion.
I, I would recommend, I, I think it's, it's certainly something worthy to discuss, but we don't have it on our, on our agenda for tonight. Maybe it's something that we could either do as a study session, or perhaps in the report section of a, of a meeting, of an upcoming meeting, if that, uh, works for the commission, and Gabriel thinks, uh, that's something that staff could, uh, provide?
Yes, I, I think we can consider that for the future. Uh, one of the things I do want to report for this item, David Correia, who is the case planner on this project, he did encourage the applicant to, um, provide some level of, uh, community outreach to neighbors in the area. And so, uh, my understanding, David, is that, um, you know, that, that is something that applicant, uh, chose not to do. Uh, and so, so the first time neighbors are hearing about this application, you know, is when the regular public noticing does occur.
Uh, David Correia, you're correct, Gabriel.
Mal, this is Commissioner Wu. I, I do have a question for you. We did the research on the, it's probably moot, but it may still have some education of, would you brief us on your research and the findings?
Uh, sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so there, um, there is a law in the California code that has to do with, uh, with, with distancing from, from schools, essentially from K through 8 schools and preschools. Um, uh, I don't want to get too much into the weeds here, because it'll bore you, but, um, the, the law is, is, is in the California code. However, a series of cases challenged that law and, uh, and its constitutionality. The way that it's applied now is on a, a case-by-case basis, um, by the, uh, the California regulatory bodies that, that deal with these, with these individuals. As applied to this specific use, because this, this, this use is not technically a school, under the California codes, it's actually a, a, a daycare, that law would not have applied. Um, however, if, if it would have been applicable, the commission still could have approved the use. Um, and whether or not the individual could remain in his, his or her place would have been up to, um, the regulatory agency, uh, engaging in that case-by-case analysis.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Mal. So is there interest in the planning commission on discussing this at a future study session, or, um, or reports, um, agenda item?
I think, I think we need to have a study session on it. I would support that.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with it, too. Gabriel, um, uh, maybe, I don't, I know we've got a pretty full calendar with study sessions, and that also requires quite a bit of staff time. Um, uh, we might want to start with a, uh, an item in the reports, maybe a little bit, uh, uh, shorter, just to relieve some, um, staff, some of staff's band with, at least in the short term? So we can start thinking about it? Do you have a preference, Gabriel?
Yeah, let, I'll, I'll look at our agenda for the future and see when may be the most appropriate time to do that, so staff has enough time.
I just think something like this could have a long-term positive effect on development in the city. And particularly, and, and Gabriel, your staff, your staff time. Here's a, here's a, a year of staff time that David, David put forth on this thing, and it, to the 11th hour, you know, the wheels fall off, that's a lot of hard work. By the staff, engineering, everybody else, shared party agreements, the whole enchilada, so, uh, I, I probably would benefit to the staff in the long term, also.
I'd like to jump in with Jim, Jim A, Mark Crandall.
Sure, please.
Um, I think it could be very well resolved by all the, and staff actually did it in this case, is giving all applicants a heads-up that, um, community outreach is important, and it can come back and bite you in the rear. Uh, so beware, and I see that it would be a lot of work for staff to have to make sure that these early, uh, notifications were done properly and correctly, that people were, uh, read them and understand them. It just seems like it's, uh, it's really up to the applicants, all applicants, um, to be aware, and I think a notification when they first walk in the door to, uh, research a project that, um, a warning and maybe a handout would be sufficient.
Yeah, I never intended this to be a, a staff action, it's just a staff action to lay on the applicant, to go, you know, like, similarly we got here in this case. This one person, the neighbor, went around with a petition, and it was very well laid out, and it, they didn't even shoot, they got signatures for it, and maybe if the applicant had done that in reverse, then a year in advance, why it would have been better. So I, I never, in my vision, mean that just noticing all this burden and requirements, a staff requirement is an applicant requirement. It's my concept.
Okay. Well, I, I don't want to go too far down the road right now, because this is, because we don't have it on our, our agenda to discuss, uh, uh, the noticing, uh, general noticing requirements. But again, if there, if there's an interest, maybe in, um, in a report section, staff at our next meeting could kind of briefly, uh, give us an overview of what they do appropriate to that, and we can give staff some of our perspectives on that. If that works for staff as well. And if the commission wants. Is there an interest? Yes? We can nod and...
I'll give you a thumbs up. I'll give you some.
Alright, looks like, looks like a majority of the commission would be interested in, in having a, a discussion on that. So, uh, Gabriel, is, um, uh, would staff be able to work, work a brief discussion about this into a reports section in the next meeting or so? Sorry, you're on mute again, Gabriel.
We could probably do that in, in July for the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know you've got a lot, and you're dealing with a lot with the COVID stuff, so, you know, if that, you know, if, if the next, if our July meeting works, great. If it has to be a little bit later, that's okay, too. So work it into your bandwidth.
Yeah. And also, Mr. Rulman, I, um, was gonna wait until the force of commissioners and staff, wasn't sure what the appropriate time would be to, uh, make a, a request, or, um, throw it out there for another topic of study. Uh, Gabriel and I had discussed it before.
Why don't we hold on, that, that actually might become, we might be doing reports sooner rather than later tonight? Um, so let's, uh, uh, let's hold on to that for a little bit, if it's a different subject, and just to kind of keep things, you know, moving, because we've got a lot on our agenda tonight.
Yes, just to make sure that's when you would like to talk about, study session?
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good spot for it, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so then, um, it looks like we don't have to do anything with item 8A, unless, uh, everyone wants, is interested in hearing the communications, which I don't, uh, I don't see. I'm interested in that, so, um, we will move on. Uh, my understanding, um, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, the other items in our public hearing sections were all noticed to start at 7 o'clock or later, um, which is about 25 minutes from now. So that being the case, uh, we can't start until, we can't start any public hearing items till that time. So I would like to bring forward our new business item, um, our code interpretation, and handle that, and then we'll move back to the public hearing items, if there's no objection. Alright, then let's do that. So we are on item 9A, interpretation 20-136, sale of industrial hemp interpretation, and Gabriel will be, um, presenting the report.
And, uh, I just want to inform, uh, Brian Brower, that we, if we could bring that presentation up for item 9A? Great. Thank you very much. Alright, so, good evening, Chairman, members of the planning commission. Gabriel Perez, your CBA planner. This item is interpretation 20-136, interpretation for the sale of industrial hemp. Next slide. Some background on this, uh, there was a, uh, potential business that did it, uh, there was a business license application submitted for San Clemente Natural Solutions, proposed on Camino de los Maras, uh, for the sale of industrial hemp products as a principal use. The sale of industrial hemp is not identified as a permitted use in our municipal code, um, in commercial or mixed-use zones, but it, it, it is also not listed as a prohibited use in the code. Uh, so, uh, when that occurs, uh, you know, there's, there's the need for interpretation, otherwise the use is considered prohibited. The applicant requests interpretation, uh, from the planning commission that, uh, or from the city, that the sale of industrial hemp be considered similar to a drugstore or pharmacy. And drugstores and pharmacies are permitted by right in the commercial and mixed-use zones today. Next slide. Uh, due to the potential for public concern, uh, I, as a city planner, did refer this interpretation to the planning commission as a major interpretation. Uh, and, uh, you know, as far as the concern, uh, you know, planning, planning staff does recommend approval, but, uh, the concern may be, um, from the public, if, if, uh, maybe this is, uh, considered something similar to the sale of marijuana, and so we'll go through that in this report. There's also no business in the city that is, um, currently dedicated principally to the sale of industrial hemp. Uh, industrial hemp products are sold as accessory products at existing stores, that includes CVS, Rite Aid, uh, GNC, Target, Sprouts, Ralph's, Albertson's. Uh, there's a boutique store on Urbah, called Urbah, on Avenue of Del Mar, and some local smoke shops. Next slide, please. So a description of the business, uh, natural solutions. Uh, so, you know, what, what they're proposing is a sale of industrial hemp, and, um, you know, so as far as industrial hemp goes, it, it is excluded from the definition of marijuana. Marijuana activities, uh, for commercial sales are prohibited in the municipal code. Uh, but industrial hemp is excluded, but it doesn't specifically state that it is, uh, permitted, right? So it's not listed in our permitted uses table in the commercial and mixed-use zones, as I stated previously. So what is industrial hemp? So our code, um, doesn't define it. It actually refers to the state code, and under the state code, it identifies industrial hemp as a crop, uh, that is cannabis sativa, having no more than three tenths percent of tetrahydrocannabinol, uh, also known as THC. And so that's, uh, what's considered to provide, uh, the psychoactive, uh, effects of, uh, marijuana. Next slide, please. And so we did do some research on, on some of the federal and state law regarding industrial hemp. And, uh, in 2018 Farm Bill, um, effective January 1st, 2019, that, uh, industrial hemp was removed from, as a Schedule 1, uh, drug of the Federal Controlled Substance Act. Also, industrial hemp is not an approved, um, product of the Federal Drug Administration. There is one drug, uh, just for industrial hemp, um, CBD product, that is, um, considered a prescription drug, and that's to treat epilepsy. Uh, but, uh, that is a prescription drug. That is not the type of product that the applicant is, uh, proposing to sell. Also, the FDA does not have authority to review dietary supplement, supplement products for safety and effectiveness. I thought that was important to, to mention. Next slide, please. The city does not have the legal authority to enforce, uh, FDA regulations. Industrial hemp, um, products are not regulated in California, but they are also not considered an approved, uh, food additive or dietary supplement. So the applicant is requesting the interpretation that the proposed sale of industrial hemp be considered similar to a drugstore and pharmacy use. So drugstores and pharmacies are permitted uses in the municipal code, as I mentioned, in commercial and mixed-use zones. Um, and so permitted by right, so that means, uh, someone that's opening up a drugstore or pharmacy. Uh, if they're going into an existing tenant space, all they request is a business license from the city. And there is actually no definition of a drugstore or pharmacy in the municipal code. Um, and so because there isn't, uh, you know, uh, therefore, there's a need for interpretation. You know, we, I did look in the, the dictionary to identify how this is considered there, uh, but the planning commission is not required to consider this definition specifically. Uh, drugstores in the Merriam-Webster dictionary is defined as a retail store where medicines and miscellaneous articles are sold. And a pharmacy is, is considered a place where medicines are compounded or dispensed. Next slide, please. So in this interpretation, uh, you know, the interpretation would be that the drugstore or pharmacy classification is the use that industrial hemp sales would be most similar to. Uh, the applicant does consider their products herbal supplements and personal care products. And so herbal supplements and personal care products are sold at local, local drugstores and health supplement stores, such as CVS, Rite Aid, and, uh, GNC. The interpretation, if approved by the planning commission, would permit sale of industrial hemp as a pr- pr- uh, principal use in the city, and that would be allowed in the mixed-use and commercial zones. Next slide, please. Staff did some research, uh, surrounding cities to determine if there are any impacts related to allowing this use in the city. And, uh, we did survey surrounding cities that include the cities of Dana Point, Mission Viejo, Laguna Beach, and San Juan Capistrano. And, uh, we did find, um, communication with planning staff at Dana Point, that they, they do consider the use prohibited, since it is not a listed, uh, permitted use in their city. But the cities of Mission Viejo, Laguna Beach, and San Juan Capistrano do consider it a permitted use, and, uh, and have permitted the use in, in their cities. We, uh, did request any comment from the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Uh, they do not have any comments on this interpretation, and they also have not reported any service calls related to this, uh, in San Clemente or, or other surrounding cities. We also did request comment from the Code Comptines Division. They have no concern over, um, the interpretation or allowing this use currently in the city. Next slide, please. So these are the findings that need to be made by the planning commission for interpretation. Uh, as a planning commission, you need to determine if the proposed use is similar in nature to the listed use in terms of its function. And then second, um, that, uh, I'm sorry, that... Actually, you might have that incorrect. So let me see this one correctly. The actual, the second finding is that, similar to this, but that the proposed use is as restrictive as the use to which is being compared in terms of impacts to traffic, parking, dust, noise, or other negative impacts. And so therefore, mentioned, we had consulted with OC Sheriff's Department as well as co-compliance about those impacts. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation for this interpretation is approval of the interpretation that the sale of industrial hemp products as a principal use is consistent with the drugstore or pharmacy use. Secondly, if the Plan Commission was to approve the interpretation, we would request that, you know, that there be a requirement that business licenses or any business license renewals identify that any sales of industrial hemp products, that they have no more than three tenths of a 1% THC, and that's to be consistent with state law. That's the end of my report, I am happy to answer any questions if you have any. And the applicant, since they are not able to comment verbally in this meeting, did provide a statement, and I can read that when the Plan Commission is ready.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Gabriel right now?
I have one.
Please.
Gabriel, you've limited industrial primarily pharmacies. I just did a quick search on Google and found that industrial hemp is used in cooking, flour. It's used to make personal products, cooking oil, gasoline, building products, shoes, sweaters, clothing, all kinds of things. It all fall under industrial hemp. Hemp seeds and hemp stalks are used for different things, have you taken that into account?
We have taken that into account, and so could those products also be sold at a drugstore or pharmacy? Some of those products could be sold, right? That could be sold at a place like a CVS store. And so one of the things, you know, I think it's important for me to mention to the Plan Commission, the stores that we typically know in the city and operate in other cities like CVS, maybe like Sprouts, Rite Aid, the products that they do sell are topical products. So they don't sell any food or actual herbal supplements that you can ingest. And that's the same thing with GNC. So I do want to make that clear, that they currently do not do that in the city. The only businesses that currently do do that as accessory sales would be existing smoke shops. And there is one store on Avenida Del Mar called Erba that does do that. So those would be products that you can ingest.
What about the clothing? I've seen hemp clothing, that is industrial hemp.
Yeah, so, and I'm not sure if that clothing today is sold in other types of store that we would classify as another use. But, you know, this, this doesn't specifically identify clothing. And so if the Plan Commission chooses to make an interpretation regarding clothing, I think it would be worthy for the Plan Commission to weigh in on that. And one of the things I want to tell the Plan Commission is that the way our permitted uses table works, a lot of times, the permitted uses are very specific. We actually don't have a category for general retail in the city. So if we did have that category, you know, as a city planner, I would potentially consider the sale of industrial hemp. Considering the multitude of products that are sold, as you mentioned, might be considered general retail, but we actually don't have a general retail classification in the city. So the closest thing I could actually identify in our list is actually the drugstore or pharmacy use.
So what, I mean, because industrial hemp is legal now, and you can make what looks like hundreds of different types of products, why would you limit it to just those two that you mentioned earlier and not just, not regulate it?
Well, I think the Commissioner, the Plan Commission could make other interpretations with this, right? So the Plan Commission could disagree with my interpretation and also state that you believe it also applies to other permitted uses in the city. And if you'd like to do that, you know, I can assist the Plan Commission to run through that list if you would like to make that interpretation.
I just had the question, thank you.
Commissioner Brower, please.
Yes, Gabriel, in your staff report or the letter from the applicant here mentions that he, this company is doing business in San Diego and several municipalities there in San Diego County. And in fact, that they're here at the invitation of Brett Brecksmore, who owns the outlet or the shopping center that has invited him into, in fact, we just had a hearing on, you know, last week or two weeks ago. So any research in how these cities where they're operating now in San Diego, did you look there at all as far as their interpretations, where they're operating already?
Yeah, we did outreach to some of these cities, and the way the interpretation, so the cities that we surveyed, they didn't make an interpretation. So it was interpretation done at staff level without anything in writing, where they permitted this through the business license process. And they allowed it by right, either considering it something similar to like general retail or consider it similar to like a health supplement store. That's how they made their interpretation in those cities, at least the cities that we talked to. We didn't talk to all the cities that they are doing business in. Let's see, we, some of the example of the cities that we talked to, Pomona, we did talk to Fontana, we did talk to another city in the Los Angeles area that they do business in. I think it was like Beverly Hills that they do business. So we did consult with some of the cities that they conduct business in. And, you know, we may be one of the few cities that they're looking to business in that would be taking this interpretation approach.
Commissioner Will and I, Michael Blackwell, I have a comment.
Please go ahead, question?
Yes, I do. So, so to Commissioner Chichinski's point, so this, Commissioner Chichinski, could you please clarify where you read that definition? Was that a state, was that language from state level? Or where did you read that, that description of what industrial hemp is? I missed that part.
What? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive the interruption. I just want to make sure we aren't coloring a little outside the lines here. Normally in a planning commission meeting, we wouldn't look to outside sources. Maybe that's just in public, in the public hearing section. But let me just ask Mal quickly, is it all right to bring in this source that was Googled? Or should we avoid discussion of that, Mal, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, it's a good question. You're right, in the public hearing context, we cannot bring in outside sources like that. This is not that context, so we're certainly able to do that. I would remind the Commission though, as we're discussing this issue, that we need to be discussing the land use itself as opposed to those things that are sold within the land use. Now, that's a tough, a tough line to draw because the land use quintessentially does include what's sold in the land use. But we need to be talking about, you know, the interpretation as it pertains to land use. One final note that I'll make is, the Commission has the ability to make an interpretation this evening and also not to, right? If the Commission decides that there's no reason to make an interpretation, that this is, you know, a very basic matter, you can leave it to staff as well. So that remains one of your options, but to get to your original question, there is no reason you can't bring in outside sources on this item.
Thank you, Mal.
Pardon the interruption.
That's okay, Commissioner Will, and the only reason I bring it up is because as we go down this road, I, you know, I think it's in good form to be consistent with our language, especially with a topic like this. And to Commissioner Chichinski's point, you know, where do we draw the line? If, I mean, I have a friend who's got a surfboard cover company, he makes them all out of hemp. You know, I know somebody that does that, I mean, where do you, where do you draw the line? So, and where I'm going with this is just, it would just reside in the language. When we're talking about interpretation and we're providing a description in text, we would, we would call it industrial hemp, for example, just a suggestion that we would just more define it. Because, and I don't know, maybe Mal could weigh in on this after I say this, but, you know, industrial hemp as used as an herbal health or dietary supplement. And we could give examples, and my reference to an example would be the massage parlor discussion we had recently, where we cited specific elements or items, you know, that were prohibited in that case for use within that establishment. So we could also define here as example, we could call it lotions or, you know, vitamins, things of that nature that are ingested or used on the skin, that kind of thing to differentiate it from a surfboard cover or clothing or shoes, right? So we're talking in context of, you know, what is acceptable within this type of a use, this envelope of uses, be it, you know, a drugstore or pharmacy. We're talking about dietary, you know, things that are ingested. That's all, that's why I wanted to draw like that.
So Bart, did you have a question?
Yeah, you did, I mean, GNC uses all sorts of natural supplements. And since we are making a land use decision on if this is allowed or not, and in a zone that currently drugstores and whatnot and retail stores are allowed in, the clientele, you're going to have seniors, you're going to have cancer patients, you're going to have epileptic patients, a wide spectrum. This isn't isolated, just one sector of the population. This is pretty much across the board. And I think Gabriel's done a good job trying to identify it as a drugstore because that's what we have a definition for. Can they sell other things in there? Yes, clothes, any drugstore can sell t-shirts or things like that. So I think this is one appropriate way to do it. The other way to say is it's just a retail store. I think, Gabriel, you may have hesitated a little bit. I do think this will be a hot topic for a lot of people who don't really understand what industrial hemp is. So there may be a little public resistance to it. But I think, from what I've researched and all on it, I don't think it is a stretch to say it's fine in a drugstore environment, neighborhood, or even in a retail, but I'd be comfortable recommending start with defining it as the same as a drugstore, GNC, supplement shop, vitamin shop. And I think maybe that's the place to start.
Commissioner Will, did you have a question?
Yes. We're talking about interpretation, not the particular case here, so. When they sell oil, CBD oil, those oil can be ingested, and they can be ingested by vaping and smoking, can they? In addition to adding to food and drinks.
Commissioner Will, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure, for example, the local smoke shops, they do sell CBD oils, my understanding is. I'm not sure if those are like smoked at all, so.
Okay.
Don't have that information.
Well, I'm not against this type of things in retail. But I won't accept those are similar to drugstore. Is, well, our zoning code does not have definition of drugstore and pharmacy. So, but the zoning code says refer to Merriam-Webster dictionary, right? So we have them here. Drugstore and pharmacy, both are defined by the defining feature of these two words are medicines. Anything else, they are accessory. If this store doesn't sell medicine, I wouldn't... A lot of stores can sell the same type of accessory articles, and they just become general retail. So that's not, that's my, my point on this.
Commissioner Brower?
Yeah, I'm actually supportive of the Plan Commission's, the Plan City Planner's input on this. I think that's a good way to bound it. Like, Mr. Blackwell, buddy, has a friend that makes surfboard covers out of hemp. Well, this type of interpretation is stuff that, you know, is in a drugstore pharmacy setting. So that kind of sets a bounding, I think, the type of use for this hemp. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of agreeable with the interpretation in the context of land use, and it puts a boundary on this type of use of hemp. It's in a pharmacy slash drugstore dispensary type setting. I guess you could go to a drugstore and buy a surfboard cover, I guess you could buy a surfboard too. But I think, I think the interpretation is a good one, and I'm glad Gabriel came forward with this too.
Commissioner Kozinski, did you have more to add?
Will this interpretation preclude the sale of industrial hemp in general retail? Gabriel?
You're on mute, Gabriel.
So currently today, there are some stores that sell industrial hemp, right? And that's where I listed in the staff report. So the Plan Commission could also weigh in on that, right? So the way that our business licenses work, so for example, like if the CVS decides to open, they can decide to request a business license, and then we issue a business license because we permit drugstores in the city. Now, if they start to sell accessory, sales of industrial hemp, you know, a lot of times that's not listed on a business license, so they go ahead and sell it anyway. But we, you know, you know, we interpreted at a staff that, you know, it could be permitted. This is the first time we've ever had a business request a principal sale of industrial hemp. Because the Plan Commission has never weighed on accessory sales, you know, I think that, I think it's valid for the Plan Commission to also provide input in that as well, if you would like to do that, because that hasn't been the case with the Plan Commission in the past.
Yeah, I would be supportive of allowing anything that's legal to be sold, especially when industrial hemp could be included in cosmetics, just general personal care products, shampoos and such, that I don't, I don't see a purpose in limiting or restricting it.
Okay, thank you. For myself, I read the letter the interested parties sent in. I think we should probably read that, give it three minutes. But before we do that, I'll put in my two cents, the, yeah, I think I feel much the same way the other commissioners do. To me, this is, you know, it's selling something legal. I kind of feel like, well, it's sort of maybe general retail, but we don't have that category. The closest, we have to put it in some category, it seems like. So what Gabriel has laid out for us is probably the closest one. We could split hairs a little bit and say, well, this is like a nutritional supplement, like a vitamin store sort of a thing, but we don't have a specific category for that either. So we may want to, when this interpretation, assuming we accept this interpretation or something much like it, I think that, like other interpretations that we have in the queue, we should be seeing this incorporated into our ordinances and come before us the next time we actually vote on an ordinance. this incorporated into our ordinances and come before us the next time we actually vote on an ordinance. And we might have an opportunity at that point to either put it in a more general category or, you know, put it in a more specific category that's more appropriate, something like that. But in the meantime, I think that it's, it seems to be an appropriate use. Putting it, you know, saying it's allowed where drugstores are seems like a you know, that seems right, you know, if you're, this is a similar very general category of product with that. So I would certainly be fine with that. So Gabriel, do you want to please read the letter into the record that we got in the form of a public comment and I'll give you three minutes to do that?
Yes, let me set the time. Yeah. Let me set my timer.
I've got, I've got a timer too.
You got it? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is this the applicant's letter?
This is the applicant's letter.
Yeah, interested party. It's not an applicant. Yeah.
It was not an applicant?
Oh. You know what? I haven't received that. Does it, does your letter state San Clemente Natural Solutions?
Yes. Would you like me to read it? I have it in front of me if you'd like.
That's, that's the applicant.
That is the applicant.
Oh, this is, okay, I'm sorry. So this is an applicant. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Ten minutes.
Dear, dear planning commission, thank you for considering a request for an interpretation regarding the sale of industrial hemp to be considered similar to a drugstore pharmacy used in the municipal code. We are thankful to city planner Gabriel Perez, who has been very professional, accessible and diligent, gathering information while assisting us navigating requirements and procedures. We hope that the planning commission will agree with the staff's recommendation to approve interpretation 20-136, provided that the business license and business license renewals must specify that industrial hemp products sold have no more than three tenths of one percent THC. Considering this interpretation, we respectfully ask that the planning commission to consider the following three points. San Clemente adult residents are currently purchasing CBD from hundreds of online and brick and mortar retailers, as well as legally purchasing CBD from marijuana dispensary. Many consumers of CBD do not feel comfortable entering a marijuana dispensary to purchase CBD where in most cases there is an armed guard and there is ID, their ID is required. Most online retailers do not offer consumers free samples to try their products before purchasing. We provide a clean, safe environment where our customers can feel comfortable shopping, similar to an upscale retailer, and provide free samples to try before purchasing. Number two, FDA Commissioner Dr. Stephen Han MD in a speech on February 28, 2020 said, "We know one thing that American people are using CBD products." Han told the audience, "People are using these products. We're not going to be able to say you can't use these products. It's a fool's game to try to even approach that." Han went on to say, "We have to be open to the fact that there might be some value in these products and certainly Americans think that's the case, but we want to get this, them information to help them make the right decisions." If the head of the FDA believes that it's a fool's game to attempt to tell Americans that they can't use CBD, then it's clear that Americans plan to continue to use CBD. In light of this, we believe that it is a good decision to encourage reputable companies such as ours to provide premium quality products and service to the residents of San Clemente, which may prevent some residents from purchasing similar products from non-reputable sources. Number three, our products are manufactured in facilities that are GMP certified and FDA registered. Because the FDA is still working on providing guidelines for the safety and sale of CBD products, industry is currently not regulated and thus has created a market for CBD products that is concerning. Some companies make false claims or are or are prepared in facilities that are not FDA certified or contain enough CBD on their labels or have not been third-party tested. This is all the more reason to have a local source such as our company where all these concerns are satisfied. We look forward to providing residents of San Clemente with a local source of premium packaged hemp products in a safe, beautiful environment attended by knowledgeable staff. Through our 14 other stores in Southern California, we have heard countless stories from our customers about the benefits they have experienced from using CBD to help with their ailments. Thank you for your time and allowing this letter to be read at your meeting. We hope to soon be a part of your community and contribute to a better place to live for the residents of San Clemente. Respectfully yours, Sean McManigle. Steve Pena, members of San Clemente Natural Solutions LLC. That's the end of the letter.
Okay, thank you, Gabriel. I don't see anybody off mute, so I'm assuming there's not much, there's no other comment. If there is, it probably should be our, our, our standard, go off mute if you have a comment and so I can recognize you. But unless there's more discussion about this item, we can make a motion to approve?
I have one more comment as Commissioner Wu.
Please.
Pharmacy and a drugstore provide some, some good benefits to neighborhoods and they are part of the healthcare system. I'd like our city planner to research our code to see if they enjoy any privilege that other general retail does not have. If we ban this store with a drugstore and a pharmacy, we may inadvertently grant them some, some privilege or benefit that pharmacy and a drugstore enjoys, but that's not, but not intended for this, this type of a supplementary store.
Any other comments on this issue or discussion? Um, yes, Commissioner Kozinski, you got another question?
Yeah, Gabriel, you're on mute right now, but with this interpretation, are you trying to capture CBD? Or are you trying to capture all industrial hemp to place into the drugstore category? You're still on mute.
All, all industrial hemp including CBD.
Okay.
So does someone want to make a motion or a recommendation for how to continue with this item?
I, I will make a motion that we approve city planner's
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Brown, it's a little hard to hear you. You might want to get a little closer to Mike.
Okay, I, I, I I make a motion that we approve interpretation 20-136, sale of industrial hemp interpretation in the city of San Clemente.
Uh, Crandall seconds.
Okay, motion by Brown, second by Crandall. So there's no more discussion on this, so I'll, excuse me, roll call. Let me do the roll call. Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Coming.
Commissioner Brown? And Chair Rulon votes aye, so we are five in favor and one against. The motion passes. Okay. So we are on to our back to our public hearing. Item 8B. Site plan permit 19-471 Heritage Parking Lot. And Aaron Guy will be leading us through the presentation on this.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is Aaron Guy. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and begin. The item before you tonight is the Heritage Parking Lot or Site Plan Permit 19-471. The location of the proposed project is at 190 Avenue de La Pata, within the business park of the Ranches San Clemente specific plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The proposal includes a new 48-stall parking lot, new landscaping, a new hardscape seating area, and a new roof cover for the existing trash enclosure. Next slide. Staff recommends the adoption of resolution PC 20-011 approving site plan permit 19-471, also known as the Heritage Parking Lot, subject to the proposed conditions of approval. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Brown?
No.
No? All right. Commissioner Wu?
No.
No? All right. Let's see. Then I don't see Commissioner Crandall.
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Doesn't sound like there are any questions. Then I will open up the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on the side?
I, I do have a question, Commissioner Rulon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not seeing you on the, on the video. Sorry about that. Please go ahead. There you are.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rulon? Are you not hearing me?
You're coming through kind of slow. You're coming through slow, Commissioner Blackwell.
Hello?
Okay, you sound better now. Can you hear me? We're losing you, Mike.
I may be swatting back on.
Yes, thank you.
You might want to turn off for a minute. You might just have a little lost memory.
Question for staff on lighting. The parking lot.
Okay. Mike?
Okay.
You blacked out there for about a minute. It sounded like you had a question about lighting in the parking lot. Mike, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, I can hear you.
Ah, now you're coming in clear. Sorry. It sounded like you had a question about lighting, so.
I did. I did. I'm sorry. I'm not sure what's happening on my end. Maybe Brian knows better, but so if I'm on loud and clear now, my question of staff was regarding lighting. And I didn't see a lighting plan in the packet.
Is that, that's the question?
Yes.
No, sir. A lighting plan was, like a photo simulation plan was not included as a part of the application.
Okay, isn't that a requirement that we have that new parking lot would be required to provide a photometric study of some sort?
Not that I'm aware of, but if it is a requirement, it's certainly something that can be added as a condition of approval.
Okay, I'd be comfortable with that. Let's make sure we have proper coverage. La Pata is a, you know, there's some topography there. And that that pad sits a little higher than grade, if you will, at, at, or at the street level. And we just want to make sure that we're putting the proper lighting in and there's no, you know, no problem for oncoming drivers coming up the hill. So I would just, I'd be comfortable with that condition. It'd have to be looked at closely.
Sure.
Commissioner Black, I believe I'm literally drawing this. Page number 21. It shows the lighting in the parking lot.
Which, which one is that?
Page number 20, I'm looking. Just above attachment.
Of course, you're paying now too. The lighting's on one of the drugs, I know that.
Yes, so, yeah, so a proposed light pole attachment was included in the final staff report, but a photo simulation was not included as a part of the application to determine how much lights flow over, if any. Staff is not aware that that is a requirement for new parking lots. I would probably defer to senior staff to see if that is a requirement. If there is such a requirement, I think that's something that could be added as a condition of approval during the building plan check process.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. Yes, you guys are referring to Commissioner Kozinski, Attachment 6, correct? 14 foot. So we do, we do have we do have a lighting design 14 feet above grade. So yes, if staff could take a look at that and make sure that there's an acceptable lighting plan included that would not cause any glare oncoming traffic, that would be ideal.
We, we may want to, I think we've had conditions in the past that talked about no light trespass or glare in the public right away or on a neighboring property. We might want to have maybe, maybe that condition might be what you're looking for.
That would be, that would be ideal.
I seem to recall in the past we've done that, but.
We absolutely have. Yeah. Is that enough information?
Be easy, call up a dark sky order to the head.
I've been trying.
Sure. So I'll defer to Mal as a processing question then. Is that something where the condition would need, the language of the condition would need to be decided upon tonight? Or is that something where the language would need to be added later and the resolution needs to come back?
We could add that tonight.
Okay, so then staff would just ask for clarification on the language from the planning commission?
So Jim, being the chair of our, our shelved lighting committee on dark skies and I guess I'd be the co-chair, maybe you and I could think of something. But the zero trespass is ideal. We don't have the full cutoff requirement at this point, unless that's a building code standard that.
It is a commercial building code standard that it'd be full cutoff, but of course, if something is above grade and someone's going underneath it at some point, you, you could potentially see some glare. As I think about, I think light trespass is something restricting light trespass is fine. We even have that in our ordinance now. But while I prefer no glare, it can get a little tricky. I wouldn't necessarily want to just put that in there because you really, you know, you have to look at the topology and that sort of thing. And if we're gonna, you know, I don't want to suddenly at the last minute impose some some unreasonable constraint without having looked at that.
How about something like this? Light emitted from parking lot lighting shall not exceed property lines. Something to that effect. Should not, you know, extend beyond the property lines.
Bart?
Yeah, we've got engineering standards right now. The engineering department reviews photometric studies of parking lots and their lighting. And it's in our ordinances and I think we just if we want to repeat what is going to be required during plan check, we can say that all parking lot lighting has to meet all city ordinances.
Perfect.
But going any further than that, we don't require of any other lots that I don't think would be appropriate to exceed those until we do get our dark skies ordinance.
Agreed. Perfect. I love it.
Thank you, commissioners. That provides enough clarification.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other? Oh, I'm sorry. So that was questions. Were there any, is there any public comment on this item that we were sent? Aaron or Gabriel?
Staff has received no public comment on this item.
Very good. Then I will open and close the public hearing. And on that, is there any other discussion on this item? And if not, we can entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I believe I am, I am moved that we approved resolution PC 20-011, a resolution of planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving the site plan permit 19-471. Request to develop a new 48-stall parking lot on an existing vacant lot, including additional landscaping and hardscaping with a new outdoor seating area at 190 Avenue de La Pata, APN 688-161-04, with the added comments of the lighting wording that was provided by, by staff, by the commission.
Does that work for staff? Do you have enough to add that to the condition?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Second by Crandall.
So we have a motion by Brown, second by Crandall. Call the roll. Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Wu? Uh, you're on mute. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rulon votes aye. Um, the measure passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on to item eight C, discretionary sign permit nineteen dash two forty, seventy-six master sign program twenty-three sixty South El Camino Real. And Aaron is going to be taking us through this one as well.
Last one from me for tonight, gentlemen. So this project at hand is the seventy-six master sign program for a discretionary sign permit nineteen dash two four zero At two three six zero South El Camino Real. Uh, the project is at two three six zero South El Camino Real At the corner of the I-five on-ramp, uh, directly catty-cornered from O.C. Tavern. It's within the NC one point three gen- uh, location of the general plan, and it's within the affordable housing overlay. Next slide, please. The proposal includes replacing the existing monument sign, A new convenience store wall sign, Refacing the existing gas pump signage and flag number signage, and recoloring the existing ballards. Next slide, please. Staff recommends the adoption of resolution PC twenty dash oh one two, which would approve discretionary sign permit nineteen dash two four zero The seventy-six master sign program with a proposed conditions of approval. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, does anyone have any question for staff? Uh, Commissioner Crandall?
Oh, I didn't realize I was unmuted, but, um, Uh, yes, I ju- I just wanted to say Aaron did a good job on this one, and was it your idea to, uh, change the face of color because, uh, I wholeheartedly agree that at least we, uh, Got some concessions on the red colors on a, uh, A city entry, uh, area.
That seemed to be consistent feedback from planning commission on discretionary sign permits for gas stations in the past, so staff did take that into consideration with this project.
But thank you for that, Aaron. Uh, Commissioner Kaczynski?
Yeah, Aaron, I have a question. Um, With the square, total square footage, um, you have right now is a hundred thirty-nine point seventy-one. Um, does that include, and I don't think it does, The signs that are on top of each gas pump?
The sign, uh, the valances?
The, the little, um, uh, marketing signs that I see on top of each gas pump. Would that be considered a sign?
Oh, so within the pictures, there are pump toppers, however, within the proposed drawing themselves, the, the pump toppers are removed. Pump toppers are not a permitted sign type.
And, and what about, um, I see a picture of more signs on the, um, Above the window. I'm looking for the picture here. Uh, is that going to be part of, you see in the proposed, it's still there. It says the millionaire made here sign for the Lotto, I guess. And there's, uh, another sign to the right of that. Is that, um, Part of, uh, The permitted signs?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm not quite sure which sign you're referring to.
Attachment number four.
I'm sorry, so the attachment number four?
Aaron, Commissioner is referring to the, uh, The advertisements that are in the windows of the, of the mark, of the mini-mark.
Uh, yes, sir, so all, yes, sir, and that's addressed also within The proposed sign program, so all extraneous signage has been addressed by code compliance staff. And it is noted, I believe on the first page, on the second page, so page two of the plans, Uh, the applicant did note that due to circumstances, uh, regarding details of existing signage, All extraneous signage existing on the site that is not accounted for in this project proposal are to be removed. Um, and that the removal of the illegal signage should have complied by March thirty-first. I would have to defer to code compliance staff regarding the status of that project.
Okay. And, and that includes the, uh, the posters they have on, uh, Page number twenty-four also on the side of the building, right?
That would include those, yep.
Okay.
And Aaron, just to clarify, um, the snack shop sign, the main snack shop sign, that is pin-mounted and unlit. Is that, do I have that right?
That's correct, and staff did take into consideration the recommendations of the DRSC and provided the applicant with the option to include a note On the master sign program plan set that allows for future illumination of that sign That's consistent with the guidelines of the architectural overlay.
Okay, and that's, and that's, is that specifically halo illumination?
It does include, it could include halo illumination, that could also include goose neck lighting. Uh, there are several types of lighting that are consistent with architectural overlay guidelines.
Um, and is, uh, internal illumination one of those?
Internal illumination is permitted within the architectural overlay, but I believe it's Limited to Halo illumination and to only so many lumens, which is also noted on the front page of the plans, that All illumination Uh, shall not exceed two thousand lumens, and the color temperature of, of all lighting should not exceed four thousand degrees Kelvin.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, any other questions for staff?
Yeah, w- one more question. Page six, Aaron, uh, is that I just want to point out that that might be a typo in the code. It says, internally lighted things shall be below two thousand. That is, uh, that is in there. A two hundred thousand lumens?
That is what our code says. That has been brought up in discussions with the planning commission before, and it is believed to be, uh, a typo within our municipal code.
Okay.
However, this plan set does only allow for two thousand lumens.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of the typo.
It would affect the dark skies zoning code.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so Aaron, could you confirm the, uh, the monument, um, LED Uh, pricing, uh, Pricing colors?
Yes, they're supposed to be white and green.
Okay, so green for diesel and white for the other leaded, regular and leaded and super, Which is consistent with what this commission is, has, um, desired with past recent projects. Thank you.
And I have a question, it just occurred to me. I didn't, I may have missed it. Um, Is there a condition with a lot of these LED, um, price signs? We've given the, uh, community development director The option of determining, um, when those are too bright Because they can be seen from a long way even in the daytime if you turn them up bright enough. Um, do we have, uh, a condition to that effect in this?
A condition that would allow the city planner to, uh, Basically determine that the light is too bright and should be dimmed at a future point in time. I don't believe we have a condition that's specific to that.
Correct. Um, we, we, I know we've had that condition in with other, um, LED Um, price signs at gas stations, because we, there is a concern that they might, that they could be turned up too brightly and seen from too far away particularly at night. Um, so, uh, I would be more comfortable if we had a condition Um, to that effect, you know, preferably that specific condition just to be consistent with, um, other things we've done in the past.
Sure, I can locate that specific wording and include it, uh, if it's the pleasure of the commission.
Okay. Is there, uh, how do people feel about that? Does that seem reasonable to everyone?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay. Alright, great. Um, Let's see, any, uh, we're still in questions. Any other questions? Mike, uh, did you have a question?
No, just gonna, uh, agree with that as well. I think it's a good, it'd be a good condition to place on this one.
Okay. Um, Then, uh, do we have any, uh, public, uh, comment that was sent in from the applicant or anyone else?
Staff has received no public comment on this application.
Very good, but I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing on, uh, this item. Um, open it up for discussion and see if anyone else, anyone has any other comments on this. Looks like we might have lost Commissioner Wu here.
You're right, yeah, I think he's trying to log back on. I don't have any other comments. I think that's a good little package. We looked at the design review, I think we, yeah, good. The customer was pretty responsive there, too. Good job there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Wu, are you back with us?
I, I, I can't hear me. Camera's out of a battery, so I'm, I'm.
Oh, the camera's out of battery, yes, we can hear you though.
Take it.
Alright.
Well, then I, I Just saw her make a motion. If the commission entertained one.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to move that, uh, planning commission approved discretionary sign permit nineteen dash two forty Seventy-six master sign program at twenty-three sixty South El Camino Real, Uh, which is a request to consider master sign program at an existing service station Located at two three six zero South El Camino Real. With, with the following conditions, that the The illumination of the Pricing Uh, shall not exceed a level That is considered inappropriate And at the discretion of the director of planning.
Um, Aaron, does that, does that, uh, wording work for you, or did you have alternative, um, wording?
No, that, that works, thank you, Chair.
Jim?
Yes.
If we could just say that it is consistent with, uh, previous approvals, I think, um, Rather than.
Has deemed appropriate, yeah.
Yeah.
So the condition is, uh, okay, you want to read that again with, uh, Uh, Art's words on that, that it's consistent with, like, just the lighting is consistent with previous approval?
Yes, so that, um, with following condition, that the pricing, The lighting, the LED lighting For the pricing on the monument Shall be consistent with previously approved Gas station monument Pricing monument lighting.
Okay, Aaron, does that work?
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, very good. We have a motion from Commissioner Blackwell.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Brown. I will call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Kaczynski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rulon votes aye. Um, uh, motion passes unanimously. Good, thank you, Aaron. Chairman Rulon?
Commissioners.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Rulon, this is Gabriel Perez, the planner. Just wanted to, uh, before Aaron leaves, uh, the, the meeting, I did want to let the planning commission know that, uh, you know, Aaron won't be with us much longer as, uh, there's another opportunity Um, that made its, uh, was available to Aaron, and she will be Working in the private sector for, um, Placeworks, and she will continue with, um, experience that she has. She, she has a background In GIS, um, uh, software and, and mapping, And she will be able to continue on with that, with Placeworks, so we definitely want to congratulate her. She's done a really good job with the planning division, And, uh, I just want to make sure that the planning commission was aware of that.
Well, I, I don't think Aaron can go unless we make a motion, right? So she has to stay.
So, yeah.
I'm, uh, I'm really sorry, Aaron. I mean, I, I think it's great for you, congratulations, but we're very sorry to be losing you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Where's Assistant City Attorney? We'll put her on a legal hold right now.
It's been a pleasure, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve with you all.
Good luck.
Thank you, Aaron. Good luck.
Good luck, Aaron. Alright. With that, we will move on to item eight D, uh, conditional use permit eighteen dash three six nine, architectural permit eighteen dash three eight nine, Settime permit eighteen dash three nine zero, discretionary sign permit eighteen dash three nine one, Chevron car wash and expansion By fifteen East Avenue to Pico. And, um, Stephanie Rojas will be, um, guiding us through this. Please, Stephanie?
Good evening, Chair Rulon and members of the planning commission. I'm going to give our IT staff just a moment to load up the PowerPoint presentation.
I think we're seeing the PowerPoint right now.
Yes, it's there.
Okay, great. It looks like it's all loaded up on YouTube now. So, uh, good evening, this is Stephanie Rojas, senior planner with the community development department. This proposal involves four applications. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, the proposal involves four applications. A conditional use permit to expand the existing convenience store. A CUP is also required to permit the drive-through car wash use And to sell alcoholic beverages in conjunction with a service station. An architectural permit and site plan permit are required to allow the construction of a new commercial building. And a discretionary sign permit is required to modify and add new signs at a service station. Next slide, please. The project site is located at the intersection of Avenue to Pico and Caie de Industrius. The site is zoned community commercial within the West Pico corridor specific plan. The applicant proposes to expand the Chevron station onto the adjacent vacant parcel. Uh, next slide, 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 please. Uh, combined, the site is in a regularly L-shaped parcel. It is unique in that three sides of streets, it, in that it has three sides of street frontage. The site is located near the freeway and is surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. The design review subcommittee determined the project site is located at a gateway due to its close proximity to the freeway. The project would demolish the existing convenience store and construct a larger convenience store with an attached drive-through car wash. The existing fuel canopy and monument sign will remain. As you can see in the street view, the site does not have a cohesive design. The canopy has a more modern aesthetic while the convenience store has some Spanish elements. Next slide, please. Before you is the proposed site plan. Uh, the existing canopy, um, is proposed to remain, and it's illustrated in gray. The proposed new buildings are illustrated in yellow. The project complies with all development standards, including building setbacks, maximum height, parking and landscaping. With drive-through facilities, the primary concern relates to traffic circulation, site access and queuing. Traffic engineering staff reviewed the site plan and determined the project would not interfere with on or off-site circulation patterns. Furthermore, the drive-through provides stacking for at least six vehicles, And the car wash queue would not directly impact vehicle circulation to the pump dispensers. Next slide, please. The preliminary landscape plan was reviewed and approved by the city's landscape consultant. During the DRSC review, the subcommittee expressed concern that landscape improvements were focused on the vacant parcel expansion only. DRSC expressed a desire to see a cohesive landscape design And recommended incorporating new plant materials dispersed evenly throughout the site. Although it's not clear in the site, in the landscape plan, the service station has existing landscape planners with mature trees and plantings. The applicant requested to retain their existing landscaping. So as such, the landscape plan does not address this recommendation made by DRSC. However, staff observed some bare areas, um, excuse me, um, staff observed some bare areas At the intersection of Avenue to Pico and Caie de Industrius, where additional shrubs may be planted. So as a compromise, staff is recommending adding condition four point one six To include additional shrubs at this intersection. The applicant is agreeable to this condition. Next slide, please. So the next two slides highlight the changes made to the project's design. The applicant worked with staff and DRSC to improve the architectural quality of the project and fully incorporate Spanish colonial revival architecture. Um, please be advised that staff noted there are inconsistencies between the architectural sheets and the sign program provided in attachment six. The applicant clarified that the signage shown on the architectural sheets are the signs they intend to install. However, the applicant requested to revise the sign program prior to the building permit issuance, Um, since it was their desire to move forward with, uh, planning commission hearing. Um, staff is including conditions one point eight, Four point one seven, and four point one eighteen, uh, one eight, I'm sorry, to effectuate this. So, um, again, this slide just provides a side-by-side comparison of initial proposal that was presented to the, to design review subcommittee, um, back in, I believe it was, um, two thousand eighteen, and the current proposal being presented to planning commission today. So as you can see, there, um, have been modifications made through the overall. So as you can see, there have been modifications made through the overall project and design to really make it fully compatible with SCR architecture. Next slide, please. And this just shows the site elevation facing Caide Industrius. It integrates SCR materials and elements such as a variety of both low-pitched and flat roofs, two-piece roof clay tiles, an accent tower over the main entrance, wooden trellis, exposed rafter tails, white stucco, archways, wall recesses, and decorative light fixtures. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide illustrates the existing fuel canopy with a side-by-side comparison with the proposed facade improvements. So this was a recommendation made by DRC. They really wanted to see consistent architecture throughout the site and highly recommended that the applicant make changes to the existing fuel canopy, although it's, it would remain in place. So simple ornamental details were added to the existing structures such as cornice and trim details and decorative pump numbers. So overall, the applicant has made substantial efforts to incorporate SCR principles into both new and existing building structures. So for these reasons, the project uses a high-quality design that is consistent with general plan policies for gateway locations. Next slide, please. The existing convenience store does not sell alcoholic beverages. As part of this CUP application, Chevron is requesting to sell alcoholic beverages from the existing store. The existing floor plan is shown for reference in your plans, and it does highlight the area that would be allocated to the display and sale of alcoholic beverages as well as the location of their security cameras. Next slide, please. The staff report provides further details on specific areas of the project that were evaluated. To summarize the staff report, the project complies with all development standards. The applicant prepared a noise study, which was peer-reviewed by the city's outside acoustical consultant. The study recommended installing a noise barrier wall to minimize noise impacts to the neighboring properties, specifically to minimize some of the noise impacts related to the dryer system and the vacuum, which, you know, are standard for drive-through car wash facilities. So with inclusion of this noise minimizing wall, the study determined the project complies with the city's noise ordinance. In terms of traffic circulation, traffic engineering staff reviewed the proposed drive-through to ensure it would not adversely affect on- or off-site circulation. Furthermore, with regard to public safety, both code compliance and police services staff reviewed the proposed business operations to ensure the project does not create conditions that are detrimental to public safety. Next slide, please. Overall, the project would eliminate a vacant parcel and improve a gateway location through redevelopment of the site. The proposed buildings use high-quality Spanish architecture, and facade improvements are proposed on the existing fuel canopy to create a cohesive site design. The project serves a public convenience by adding an accessory car wash use that complements the existing service station and by providing additional services through the proposed convenience store expansion. Staff recommends approval of the project with conditions. The applicant has reviewed all conditions of approval, and they are agreeable to all conditions. This concludes staff presentation. I have not received any public comments on this item. However, I wanted to mention that the applicant and Chevron are listening to the meeting live, and they are on standby to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rulin, I have questions of staff. Did we lose Jim? Oh, you're on mute, Jim.
Yep. Yeah, please go ahead, Commissioner Blackwell.
Good, thank you. Yeah, that little button, so small. It's hard to, hard to see. I, well, this project, fortunate to have been a part of the Design Review Subcommittee discussion with it. I think it's great. This is, it's an established use. It's been successful for a long time, and this expansion seems to be pretty normal or natural. The questions I have, however, are relative to staff's recommendation for landscape improvements, of course. It, it looks like, Stephanie, that the applicant was not agreeable to incorporating some of the landscape enhancements that were recommended based on the fact that there's already landscape materials there in the existing areas of the property. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. And was the, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, but was it made clear that we were looking for continuity? We, as in the city, Design Review Subcommittee's recommendation was that there be some continuity from the new area where the improvements being made, where the majority of the, major improvements are being made throughout the property. Was that made clear to the applicant?
That was made clear to the applicant. We did discuss during the DRC, or subsequent to the DRC meeting, that that was something that staff was looking for. There was some changes in terms of the primary contact with regard to the applicant's side. So, you know, some of that might have been lost somewhat in translation. But again, the applicant was there at the DRC meeting. They did receive the meeting minutes that emphasized that there was a desire to see more cohesion within the landscape design. And at that time, the applicant did think that it was, that there would be limited opportunities to be able to make additional improvements given the existing conditions of the site.
Okay, okay, good. And then the rationale for maintaining their position on the trash enclosure cover? Recommendation was wood, and they're not willing to make that change. What was the rationale? Or what was the reason the applicant refused to do that?
I do want to clarify that the applicant is agreeable to that condition of approval. I will admit that there might have been a little bit of an oversight because in the site plan, there is a new comment that said that there was going to be a wood trellis. But then when I went back and took a look at the specific details related to the trash enclosure, you know, it's, it's very clear that it is not a wood trellis, but it is a, you know, a metal roof over it. So there was some inconsistency within the plan, and I do apologize for not catching that sooner. But that being said, I did have a discussion with the applicant. I did communicate to them our desire to use a wooden trellis, and that is something that they are agreeable to changing.
Oh, that's good news. Okay. All right, so all the questions I have. Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff, from anyone?
So, so to clarify, the applicant's just making minimal inputs as far as Commissioner Blackwell's request about the planning in the various areas of the site. We're not going to improve the plant palette very much at all. Let me clarify that, please, Stephanie.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown. Could you repeat the question, please?
Okay, let's clarify where we're at with, with the landscaping plan. In other words, we're making minimal changes here? Or we, DRC requested some changes, but the applicant apparently is declining to do that as far as refreshing the site with all this, this wonderful new design they're putting in?
So I think, yeah, so with regard to the landscaping, you know, the applicant is certainly open to any recommendations, but, you know, given just the existing conditions of the site and the, you know, all of the landscaping that's at the existing site, they felt that there was limited opportunity to be able to add new landscaping. Because really, one of the things that they did emphasize to me was that they did not wish to remove existing landscape from the property. And so, you know, they felt that there was limited opportunity to really tie in some of the new landscape palette that's being proposed on the expansion parcel. And one thing that I think is also worth noting is that this project does have a very long history at the city. It's, you know, been in process since early 2018, when it first came in for pre-application. And so there has been some changes. One of the things that the applicant has communicated with me is that there have been some changes on the Chevron side even prior to COVID with regard to their construction timeline. That based on just the other projects that are in the works on Chevron, that there is a possibility that this project, you know, is not on a higher list of priority projects in terms of the construction timeline for Chevron. And so there was even talks about just putting this project overall just on hold in the meantime until they are ready to resume with their expansion projects. But that being said, along the same lines of what the Commissioners discussed earlier, you know, with so much time and effort being put into this application already, staff really encouraged Chevron to continue on with this entitlement process and to really secure those entitlements in hand. You know, it would just be such a shame to lose all of the time and work involved in this process. And, you know, although we can't, you know, we can't predict with 100% certainty what the future is going to hold, staff really worked diligently with Chevron to try to get this to the finish line so that we can bring it to a public hearing today. So that is also one thing that I wanted to share that did affect just some of the overall discussions that staff had with Chevron based on these other factors that are really outside of our control.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that clarification.
Okay, I had a couple of questions too. First, let me just say, this was nice work by the DRC. I think it's, it's made real good progress from the, from the original, and it's, you know, spices it up for that area of town, and that needs it. I did want to ask regarding the signage. The architectural sheets I saw, you said that they were, they're supposed to be pin-mounted halo illumination, I believe. And it looks like, at least on the sheets that I have, unless I'm looking in the wrong place, are flush-mounted and internally illuminated. Am I looking at the wrong architectural sheets? I'm looking at sheet CA1 from the smaller set of sheets with the large color photograph of Chevron. It says it's an internally LED illuminated letters, blue acrylic face. And it looks like it's showing flush mount, if I'm not mistaken. So I just want to see if I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Commissioner Rulin, I'm sorry, what sheet number were, are you referring to?
That was sheet CA1. I'm looking specifically at this drawing. You can see it. You can't really see it on my camera. It's invisible. We had two sets of architecture drawings. One was smaller than the other, and that's CA1 on the smaller one.
And Chair Rulin, you'll have to forgive me. I'm just trying to scroll through the...
That's all right.
...plan sheets to find that one.
Let's see if I can find it.
Because I am looking at sheet CA2.1, the proposed canopy elevation. And under the keynote, it does say that they are proposing halo illumination, wordmark, pin-mounted letters with blue acrylic face.
It'd be better, let's see, do we, we don't have page numbers in our staff report sheet? I'm sorry, that was CA2.1?
That's correct. It's, the drawn title is Proposed Canopy Elevation.
All right, well, there's, then we may want to specify that we use those architectural sheets because that's different from the sheet that I was referencing. And it looks like it's two different descriptions. One is, you know, this one said, there's no drawing, but it says it's, does it say pin-mounted halo illumination? Yeah, so this says pin-mounted halo illumination, but the sheets I was looking at appear to be internally illuminated and flush-mounted. So I, I think we just want to make sure that we, we don't just say the architectural diagrams. We might want to reference specifically the set or the page number, something like that. So that we get the right one.
And that's certainly something that we could clarify within the condition of approval that was already included. We can specifically specify the page numbers because that is definitely a good call. I know that there were some inconsistencies because, you know, when you have multiple different vendors preparing the drawings, there could be just, you know, minor inconsistencies between the different sheets, depending on who's working on it.
Okay, yeah, we could put that maybe in, in Condition of Approval 1.8 to clarify that, so, I think. Something like that. That's not a problem. Another question I had was the LED colors on the price signs. I didn't see anything that specified that they were going to be white and green like we have in other places. Did I miss that? Is that a condition of approval or specified somewhere?
You know, I do not believe that was something that was discussed with the applicant.
Okay, we might want to add that, as well as the other one we just put in referencing, what we've previously done in terms of the brightness of the signs.
Yeah. And one thing, Commissioners, that I do want to clarify is that currently, the price sign does not use LED lighting. If you do go the very last sheet of your project plan, it shows the proposed refacing of the monument sign. And so, yeah, the existing numbers, the price, pricing numbers are, what's the right word? You know, the pull-out numbers, so it's not electronically illuminated.
Okay, so there's no...
That's why it wasn't discussed.
All right, that's my mistake. There's no LED signs at all. Every one of these we see now have LED signs, so I...
Yeah, it's standard.
So my mistake. Thank you.
This is the first gas station that hasn't gone up, gone, gone that way, that I remember.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff? If not, then staff has told us we don't have any public comment on this, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing and open this item up for discussion. Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, I want to say this project's come a long, long, long ways. It's basically a remodel on the existing site and a new building and car wash on the other site. And we were strapped with a canopy, which was not being torn down. And we improved it as much as possible, taking into account the requirement for remodel is to go towards Spanish colonial revival as best we can. And I think we've accomplished that. But I just want to go on record to make sure that other projects within the gateway realize that new construction will be held to the same standards that Starbucks and other projects in gateways have been. And, and I think that's the way we will continue to do it, so. I think this has gone a long ways. The landscaping, it has been reviewed by our landscape architect, the city's landscape architect. It complies with the quantity and size that our ordinances require. It complies with the quantity and size that our ordinances require, even though we, we hope that they make it as vibrant and lush as possible. That's all my comments.
Okay, thanks, Bart. Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thank you. Well, I agree with Mr. Crandall, has come a long way, and I also agree wholeheartedly with the, with the statement that Commissioner Crandall made about the standards to which we, we hold those that are endeavoring to improve properties or gateway areas. And this particular one, though, generally it looks like a good project. I think it's, you know, again, you know, they've been a great operator there, viable, successful land use, and I always love to see that. However, there are a few pieces here that I'm just completely uncomfortable with, and that is the landscape. And we did spend a considerable amount of time at the D R S C level discussing the landscape and, and, and the rationale behind the position that the D R S C took was really, and staff did confirm this, that we're looking for continuity in the, in the natural environment, if you will, those components of the, of the project that are natural. And there is a large part of this project that will be developed from ground up, and all new landscape will be installed that's current. There's been some effort, I do want to acknowledge there has been some effort by the applicant to, you know, touch on some of the older existing landscape areas. I just don't think it gets there, in my opinion. I believe that in having been to the site many times, I do, I do utilize this use personally. And yes, there is, there is mature landscape there. However, that landscape is not healthy. It's overgrown, it's unsightly, and it's turned into a topiary, I mean, all the, all the bushes are cut into shapes, and I don't believe that was the intent. And I, as I recall, unfortunately, I don't have a note, I'm looking at some older notes from the D R S C level, at least I thought it, and I'm assuming and hoping that staff did go back to the original entitlement, since there has been quite a bit of discussion on the landscape, a reference to the original exhibits and what was approved and what the applicant is obligated to, to maintain and to have on the property. I, I don't know, let's assume it, it wasn't done, and so we have a new discussion here. I think it's entirely reasonable that we ask for at minimum that the overgrown ivy be removed from the palm trees. I mean, it's extremely unsightly, especially when parts of it die and it turns brown. It's a haven for rodents. It just does not look good. It looks old, and we, again, are improving a big portion of this property with all new landscaping, completely different plant material. It's going to look like an island, like it's not even part of the, you know, architecture aside, landscape is, as we have established over these years, working together on the projects, that, you know, that's an important part of this too. And I think it's not unreasonable to ask the applicant to remove and replace, you know, remove the old stuff. It's lived its life, it's, it's done its job, and it's, it's, it's kind of beyond that point now. It's just kind of, in my opinion, past its usefulness. It just, you can't tell what anything is anymore. It's just a bunch of squares and oblong shapes there. We don't even know what it is. Is it ivy? Is it, there's a hibiscus there all by itself. I don't know if somebody dropped a, a plant on the corner and just grew there because it's nowhere else on the property. It's hodgepodge, and it is at the gateway. And I just really deeply believe that this deserves some attention. So I would at least recommend that we, that we go with the D R S C's recommendation to improve and string the new landscape palette into the old. Remove the old ivy, clean up the palm trees, and I think we'd have something quite special here. Okay? That's hard to say on the landscape.
Thanks, thank you. And other comments or discussion on this item from anyone? I have a couple of things. I think I would like to see some improvement in the landscaping as well. I need to go back and review what D R S C recommended. That may be, I think if we make any, make any changes, we should probably be specific in our recommendations, and if D R S C had some specific things, we might want to just, you know, lean on that. I do have a little bit of concern about the, the sound levels. I know they're looking to build a six-foot wall to protect from the dryer sounds, but I'm, at least my reading of the sound report looked like you were going to violate the, that they're probably going to violate the sound or noise ordinance whenever those come on, particularly since it'll probably be a little higher than six feet. So I'm a little concerned about it. I was also seeing, I think, 70 decibels across the street, and there's some mixed retail there, and there's no doors or windows facing that. It's the back of a building, which is, you know, good for that area, but that still might limit what's done in the future if at some point someone wants to go and rebuild part of that and they want to, you know, sort of turn that inside out or something. It makes it more difficult if there's kind of an already existing noise ordinance violation across there. So I've got, so I have a little, I have a little concern about that. My reading anyway of the documents seem to say it's just a concrete wall, so that's just going to reflect sound around. We may want to recommend some absorptive material on some side of it to try and help alleviate that sound bouncing all around. And maybe even, we've done this, you know, in fact, kind of recently, we have this recommendation. We might even want a sound meter at the edge of the property to measure to see if they're going over the allowed decibels. I think that's going into industrial areas, so I think, I think they're allowed 65 decibels if I'm not mistaken. But, but it is a bit of a concern, probably mostly for the people who are just on the other side of that, that vacant lot that's going to be built on, to a lesser extent, you know, the people across the street. So I'm kind of interested in hearing what other people have to say. I think, see if there's other perspectives on there. We also may want to limit the hours of the car wash. Car wash is loud, the gas station's open 7:24, and do we, do we think someone should be running that dryer at 2:00 in the morning and that sort of a thing? There's not a lot of residential around there, I'll grant you. But I'm just wondering if that's, you know, if we want to limit that and say not after 10 or 11 at night, something like that. It just seems, you know, there may be some time that is too late, even if it is kind of an industrial area there. So those are my basic comments, mostly, mostly with the, involving the noise, potential noise and ways to deal with that, and then limiting the hours to reduce the noise. And I'm interested in hearing what other commissioners might have to say about that. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I think the project's come a long way as I attended one of the R S C meetings. I mean, Mr. Wu, that was a lot of 3.7 to the applicant that he responded to. And I think I would be amenable to or supportive of limiting of the car wash hours, you know, 7:30, 7:30 in the morning until 10 at night, some, some, even though it is an industrial zone on those hours, and I would certainly support Commissioner Blackwell's fight. But Chevron's going to go the extra mile, whatever it is, with a very good design. I think it's going to bring them a lot of business is they just round it off with a good landscape palette and, and put the, dot the i's and cross the t's and bring this project home. I think they're almost there, and with a couple of additions like that, they're going to hit it out of the ballpark. My comments.
I'll make some comments. Let me, let me chat.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Wu.
Yes, my comment, especially on the noise issue. This is, I believe that the six-feet fence height limit is applicable to residential only. Outside a residential area, it's all just questionable, it's up to, it's up to us. So, like the staff look at the sound analysis to verify to the commission that they will not violate our noise ordinance. If they do, then I think the most effective way, well, more sound reduction is to raise the fence height, because the majority of the sound get to the other side by diffraction. So, so adding more sound approving capability of the wall or fence itself helps very marginally, but raising the height will improve quite well. So if six is not enough, perhaps we can go up to, for example, eight. I don't know, I just want to, but this is just the idea to, to improve the sound reduction.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Crandall.
Yeah, it is an industrial area, and I don't think you can reinvent the wheel on the issues with this. Businesses will be closed, but I think if we look back at Valero, the Valero remodel, they've got a car wash now. It's adjacent, actually much closer to residential than this project. And I think we should probably just tell staff to implement the same sound measures and requirements we've done in the past on the Valero project, rather than leaving it kind of changing things as we go. At least we've got a model we can go with and reference. If they're going to be applying and starting construction, we'll have a track record of Valero by then. And I think that may be a way to address the acoustic issues on this one.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, Jim, thank you. Well, I was thinking about a discussion that we all had a few years ago, and relative to residential uses. And to our surprise, we discovered that there is in fact residential uses in this area. If you recall, we were looking at another type of project for a particular type of housing, and Senate bill that came through, and we were examining all options in town, and we did discover that on Navarro, just the next street over, there, there were at least one, maybe two, single-family residential uses there. And Commissioner Wu, to your point, the limited hours, I think, would be important because in this area, that sound, that, that, that sound does drop at night in this area. And then you'll have the folks that are not far away, not on the same street, but on the other street, and there's, for the most part, there's an open corridor. If you look at an aerial, I mean, structurally, there's an open corridor that I'm pretty sure they would hear those dryers. It's not far from the noise source. And we have not dense foliage, and we have low roof lines. Okay, and then you have a large wall that that sound could potentially attenuate from at the freeway, a large wall there. So it's likely that there'd be some sound that would be picked up from those, you know, we, you know, if that happens, there'd be some degree of deprivation of their, you know, enjoyment of their property as it is now. I mean, they're right in the middle of an industrial area, and I'd hate to, you know, make matters worse for them. But I would agree that, that some level of limitation on the hours might be a way to do it. You know, putting a six-foot wall there. To Commissioner Crandall's point, I mean, you know, Valero is near residential uses. You know, the, the design layout was a little different than this. I don't know if it's six in one, half dozen the other or not, but we have an opportunity to address those, those fans are, those dryers aren't very, very loud. So if it's just with hours only, I'd be on board with that. I'm not totally opposed to a wall or some other form of noise deadening. I just don't know what that would be other than a wall at this point, and maybe that's something staff could help with, and we can further discussion tonight on it. But I think definitely that limited hours, I would definitely support that.
Chair Wu, this is Stephanie Rojas. If I may add just some additional information that's being shared by the applicant, just to help with the commission's discussion. So as I mentioned, the applicant, as well as Chevron, are watching the YouTube stream. There is a little bit of a delay between the Zoom meeting and the YouTube stream, so I do apologize that I'm beginning to get these comments with a little bit of a delay. But I would just like to share some of their comments. For the most part, they are agreeable to everything being discussed and considered by the planning decision. So I'll just go through these emails one by one. With regard to landscaping, they are open to updating the corner treatment and looking at other opportunities while trying to maintain the mature landscaping where feasible. They also say that Chevron is okay with replacing the dead landscaping and upgrading other areas as needed. So if the commission would like to make specific recommendations as far as what landscape treatments they would like to see, that's definitely something that we can incorporate into the condition of approval. Um, let's see, and what else are they saying? With regard to noise, they say Chevron is agreeable to increasing the wall height to eight feet. So yes, that's something that they agree to. With regard to the hours of operation, Chevron is agreeable to limiting the hours of the car wash to 6:00 a.m. to 10 o'clock P.M. So rather than proposing it 24 hours, seven days a week, as currently proposed, they are opening, are open and agreeable to limiting the hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10 o'clock P.M. And the last thing they wanted to mention was that on page 73 on the canopy plan, there is a specific detail that shows the signage being offset from the wall that shows the specific detail for the halo illumination.
That's, is that page 73 of the staff report?
Uh, yes, page 73 of the staff report.
I don't have any numbers on this. Oh, there we go. It says internally LED illuminated, blue acrylic letters, and it's a little small, but it appears to be flush mounted on that one. I think that that's the same one. That's still sheet CA1. So if I'm looking at the right one, page 73, right?
Yes, that's what they stated. But again, there definitely are inconsistencies in terms of the signage shown within the plan, so we can definitely specify which ones this approval would be based off of.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, pin mounted halo lit is kind of our standard, and if they're agreeable to that, you know, we can either reference the page or say it explicitly in the condition. It's certainly fine with me either way. All right, anything else from the applicant?
That is all that they've shared at this moment. Again, there's a little bit of a delay with the YouTube stream, so I'll see if there's anything else that comes in.
Okay, and I'll, I'll thank the applicant too for being amenable to the conversation and chiming in. I know this is a difficult way to participate, so I appreciate it.
Right, right.
And Commissioner Kozinski, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm generally in favor of supporting this project, and I agree with Commissioner Blackwell that the landscaping is, needs some improvement. I'm glad the applicant's willing to do that. The hours of operation for the car wash, I would suggest using the same hours that Circle K in Camino Vela Cruz Avenue de Pico. There's a car wash there that I'm sure has some hours of operation. As far as the, I don't know if an eight-foot wall will help all that much, but I'm supportive of putting one in if, if it, if necessary. But overall, I'm happy with what the applicant did with this project, and I'm supportive of it.
Okay, thanks. And a quick question for staffs. Stephanie, from staff's perspective, does staff see any, any issue or problems with an eight-foot wall instead of a six-foot wall?
No, there is no issue with that. As Commissioner Wu mentioned, and I was able to confirm right now, there is no height limitation when it comes to non-residential zones. So although there is a height limitation in residential zones where walls are limited to six feet in height, there is no similar height limit for this particular project site.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blackwell, I think you've been waiting the longest to speak?
Yes, I have. I, well, I was, I was going to further the discussion on the landscape, and did I I, well, I was going to further the discussion on the landscape and did I, Stephanie, I want to ask if, did I hear that correctly? That the applicant has agreed to remove some of the older plant material and replace it with some new plant material that's consistent with the new portion of the project?
That is correct. Their email says Chevron is okay with replacing the dead landscaping and upgrading other areas as needed.
Okay, so the as needed part is what I need clarification on. So Jim, do you think we need to talk about it here or can I just continue with staff on that?
To define exactly what landscape, what should happen to the landscaping, it's fine if you want to discuss that with staff for a minute.
Okay, well, so my thought is that, you know, it's not really a matter of necessarily a matter of dead landscaping. It's a matter of landscaping that's kind of lived its life. And it's now turned into, as I said before, topiaries and mismatch and hodgepodge. There is some stuff that could be cleared out that's dead, but then that'll leave even bigger patches of areas that are just barren. So to add some of the new plant material in with that old stuff, it just, it may even look worse. I think the best approach here is that all of it gets removed, especially on the northeast corner. The palm trees, keep those. Those are great. Clean those up. Get rid of all that ivy, all the overgrown, the hibiscus, the betosperm, it looks like in there. I mean, I'm not here to design for them, but I'm saying to bring what they've already offered us to the most important areas of the property, the most highly visible portions of the property should be getting that improvement. You know, those plant materials, you know. So that would be, so, you know, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with the city. So I think there definitely needs to be some specifics here. And that request would be that, you know, if the other commissioners agree to this, the request would be that the, that all of the old landscaping be removed, especially in the northeast corner, the southeast corner. There's some things in there that could be maintained. But again, it's been overgrown. It's just a lower form of just topiaries in there. It's kind of hodgepodge. It really doesn't look like it has any real character to it. And the continuity is certainly lost. The only thing you have there that gives any continuity is the, you know, the three palms that are there with ivy growing up in them. So that would be, to be clear on this, that that theme be carried all the way through from the new area by the car wash to the northeast corner and to the southeast corner. And the old plant material will be removed.
Commissioner Rowland? Commissioner Wu, Commissioner Wu's been waiting a long time, so let me, Commissioner Wu, can you, please go ahead.
Thank you. I commend the applicant's willingness to cooperate with the city and to work with our, this commission. I'd like to support this project. Commissioner Blackwell, I rely on you to come up with specific language on the landscaping. As far as the operation hours, if we cannot get the operation hour of the other project, Commissioner Kozinski mentioned, then I'd propose that it go with our quiet hours. That is, well, non-quiet hours. Quiet hours are from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So perhaps we limit the operation from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I do recognize perhaps some people want their car wash before they go to work. So I'm flexible on that. But it's very easy and convenient to just start at 7:00 until 10:00 o'clock to be consistent with the city's quiet hours.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, did you have more?
Yeah, I think one of the best ways I think to approach this, your show has got a wonderful project. We just bring it, the last cross the finish line here with, I think the eight-foot wall is wonderful. I think the operating hour, like Commissioner Wu, by that is good. And for Commissioner Blackwell, maybe consider that Chevron comes up with a landscaping plan and if it's approved by our city landscape consultant, and I, you know, Pat Murphy is a great, I've got a lot of taste in him as our landscape bar, then maybe we have put the words into the fact that come up with a viable landscape plan that makes their project go across the finish line that they put so much effort into when this landscaping is just, you know, 10 cents on the dollar, the whole project. And just make sure that if Pat Murphy signs off on it, I think it should be good enough for us in the plan. That's what I offer for it. Simple way to round this up, so you don't want to get into the design mode here. I need the mission meeting. That's what I offer.
Okay, well, just to try and pull some of this together. This is what I see so far in our discussions and I'll bounce this off you, see if you guys agree. And people seem to be fairly favorable of this. People seem to be positive on an eight-foot wall, setting car wash hours either 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. or 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Remove all the existing landscaping except for the trees. Replace it with new landscaping, which needs to be approved by the city's landscaped architect. And modify condition of approval 1.8 to specify that the signage is pin mounted and halo lit. So that's what I have. Does anyone feel that I got that wrong or feel something's missing?
I think you got it right, Commissioner Rowland.
I agree, yeah, but I would like to just add one thing to the statement you made about the removal and replacement of landscaping. Will we remove and replace with landscape palette and design consistent with the proposed new landscape palette and design? That's all. So we're just looking for continuity. And when Pat Murphy hears that word, he'll know exactly what to do. That's a common thread in landscape architecture, continuity. Just pull it through. You know, we just want it to, we want the most visible parts to look as nice as the part that nobody's really going to see in the back. So that's it. Pretty simple.
Okay, well, if we're, if we're all pretty in line with that, then there's either, we can discuss this further or someone can go for a motion.
I'll try for a motion, but Chair Rowland, you'll have to come in with the final, final mark.
All right, I'll do what I can.
I move the planning commission, approval resolution, planning commission of the City of San Gomita, California, approving conditional use permit 18-369, architectural permit 18-389, site plan permit 18-390, and discretionary sign permit 18-391 for Chevron Car Wash and Expansion located at 515 East Avenue de Pico. This is the resolution number, planning commission number PC 20-014 with the following modification by Chair Rowland.
Modification one is that condition of approval 1.8 states that instead of saying the sign permit is based on the signage shown in the architectural sheets, instead the signage must be pin mounted and halo lit. Let me know if that's an error. Second, that the car wash hours are limited to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as proposed by the applicant. Third, that the wall be changed from six feet to eight feet. And fourth, all existing landscaping is to be removed except for trees and replaced with new landscaping that is consistent with the new plan that has been provided by the applicant and it must be approved by the landscape architect. I beg your pardon, I didn't name, I didn't number all of these conditions of approval. Do I need to do that?
Chair Rowland, this is Stephanie from, yes, we can definitely incorporate that into the resolution.
Very good. So those are, those are the conditions that I saw. So there's a motion by Brown with conditions. Second?
Blackwell second.
Blackwell seconds. I will call the roll. Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rowland also votes aye. The measure passes unanimously. All right, congratulations to the applicant and thanks, everybody. And our next item is item 8E, conditional use permit 19-447, micro, minor architectural permit 19-448, minor conditional use permit 28-054, and administrative encroachment permit 20-0161, Los Molinos Beer Company and Tasting Room. And Jonathan Lightfoot is going to be taking us through this, so please, Jonathan. I don't know if you've started, Jonathan, but we can't hear you, so you might be on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Okay, and first of all, thank you to Brian Brower and his team from IT for helping us all evening right after helping staff the night before at City Council. And Brian, if I could have you jump back a few slides, there'll be a title slide that has my name on it. We'll begin at that one. Excellent. Thank you so much. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Rowland. As you just mentioned, this entitlement before us does involve a few different requests and it is for a proposed new brewery, the Los Molinos Beer Company. If we could go to the next slide, please. The project's scope is a request to remodel and repurpose an existing industrial building into a microbrewery and restaurant. And I've listed here the different entitlements and why those are required. So there's a minor architectural permit that's needed for a facade remodel, a minor conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine onsite and outdoors, a conditional use permit to allow for offsite parking via lease agreement with the city at the Cañeda Benito parking lot, and finally, an acknowledgement of an existing encroachment into the right of way. Next slide, please. Here we have an aerial that shows the location within the Los Molinos Business Park. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, this business park is the oldest one in town and also is very dense with older buildings. So the project address is 151 Cañeda de Los Molinos. It's here at the intersection of Los Molinos and Cañeda Valle. I have a blue square there pointing to the left of that building. It's within our Los Molinos focus area of the general plan. And as far as zoning goes, it's within our West Pico Quarter specific plan within the light industrial area of that zone. It's near Benito Canyon Park. You can see to the right the lower overflow parking lot for that park. Next slide, please. This slide shows the street view, existing conditions, and the former tenant of this space, which was Montgomery Motorcycle that created or built custom motorcycles and sold them from this location. You can see in the foreground, there's a rectangular shape of concrete and a portion of that was formerly parkway, planted parkway. As you move to the left in this image, you'll see that there are palm trees and there is a planted parkway that's consistent along this sidewalk. And it is a goal of the specific plan to maintain a planted parkway. That is something that staff has addressed with the applicant through this project. Next slide, please. You can see here the most recent work that was done at the site about 50 years ago in 1971. This is a stamped approved plan from the city indicating in addition. So you can see at the top right corner of this plan, the expansion area that was done in 1971. A portion of that expansion encroaches a couple of inches beyond their property line. And so we just have acknowledged that through conditions of approval, there'll be an encroachment permit piece that will be finalized just to recognize that. It does not, however, inhibit the ability for a sidewalk at that location and we'll be able to see that from a site plan in a moment. I also wanted to just point out that we had recognized five parking spaces back in 1971. And that's something that we would not be recognizing now, especially parking spot number five at the bottom does not meet our parking dimension standards. And to access that space, you'd have to drive on the sidewalk. So there are some changes to parking with this site. So let's move to the next slide that shows the current site plan. You can see that now there's been a shift in the curb path and we have two parking spaces, including a new ADA space directly in front of the building, so that there is a path of travel there. And speaking of path of travel, you can see that there has been a sidewalk incorporated onto Cañeda Valle that does not currently exist. There is still space for a rear parking spot that's shown at the top of the screen. And there at the bottom of the screen, you can see an area that is the proposed outdoor patio as well as a call out for the replanted parkway. Now, it was a piece of discussion at Design Review to not only replant that parkway, but to incorporate a continuation of the Queen Palms there. There's also a Queen Palm proposed to be planted at the rear to have a sense of that continuation of the street tree landscaping along Cañeda Valle. Next slide, please. So the applicants have brought forward this rendering. You can see a couple of the changes that are proposed. The most obvious are the siding and the roofing materials that we're going for more of a board and baton siding look with almost a, with a metal standing seam roof. I refer to it in the report as kind of a farmhouse industrial. And that is enhanced even more by the windmill feature that they have there as well. That does fit into the aesthetic that we have for this specific plan. It's not our typical Spanish colonial viable area. As was again discussed at Design Review, we have and encourage an eclectic character in this area. So the design is something that was supported by Design Review. The portion on the right actually currently has more of a flat roof and that's been changed to a pitched roof to more cohesively match the rest of the building. And you can see again from this rendering that there is an incorporation of landscaping in the parkway. And also one other element that was discussed by Design Review. The applicants have a desire to maintain somewhat of an open air feeling at the building. But Design Review was, the committee was uncomfortable with having that front entry garage door being so wide open without having any form of a barrier to entry or access. So they requested something more substantial than just a singular sign at that location. So the applicants have proposed to use multiple zinc potters, potted plants. They have those as part of the original proposal along other walls and they would just have a more dense use of them at this location. If we could move to the next slide. And this shows the other perspective of this elevation as you go around the corner towards Cañeda Valle. And that shows the continuation of the sidewalk that doesn't exist there currently. And the staff report goes into how this project is meeting some general plan and coastal land use plan policies by improving pedestrian connectivity. They also are providing a new area of bike racks within the site. If we could go to the next slide. Going into the landscaping plan, currently there are no trees at the site and this project would bring in multiple new trees. As mentioned earlier, there would be a new Queen Palm in the parkway as well as a new Queen Palm at the back corner along Cañeda Valle. And then there's a few more decorative pedestrian scale trees made in, a fruitless olive and a strawberry tree. Zinc potters, planter pots, as mentioned. And then kind of the thematic planting would be along the windmill. There would be climbing hops, so kind of a vine type of a plant. Obviously, hops would be incorporated into the business use there. So that's kind of a thematic symbolic planting at that location. And it would grow up the wall as well, so providing some vertical foliage in that location. The bottom picture shows that there's a planter bar, if you will. So there will be some stools around a bar that has plant materials. So kind of putting that landscaping front and center in the customer experience. If we could go to the next slide. This is not a comprehensive list, but just a few of the recommendations from that Design Review meeting on February 26th and a few corresponding responses. The first was to enhance the pedestrian orientation of the project. And you can see the response, so that bike racks are incorporated. There was an expressed concern over the proposed. Uh, there was an expressed concern over the proposed trash storage location inside the building, and the applicant has gotten approval from, um, OC Health and relocated those trash cans to the backside of the building. Um, the plans do show, uh, currently an insufficient number of trash cans, so I did have a discussion with the applicants about that, and they do have room, uh, for up to twelve of those, uh, containers. So that's going to be something that is, uh, increased. Um, and the third item here is, uh, that the Design Review Board expressed a concern with the lack of barrier separating the allowed alcohol consumption areas from the parking lot, and that's something that, um, the response was shown in that rendering, uh, that we've seen previously. So if we can move on to the next slide. Um, touching on parking, that's the, the focus of the conditional use permit, to allow for a portion of the parking to be satisfied offsite. Um, staff is well aware that this is a very challenging area for parking, and so this was certainly a challenge for staff to review and come up with, um, a somewhat creative solution, um, to address the parking. Um, and that solution is to, um, consider an offsite parking lease agreement at the overflow lot for, uh, Bonito Canyon, uh, which can be seen here in this aerial image. It is something that there is precedent for on the south side of town. Uh, there's overflow parking at the, uh, golf course that is leased by, um, a couple of businesses, including OC Tavern and La Ventura, um, within the last ten years. Uh, and those parking space leases are non-exclusive, so there's not a, a permission to post restrictive signage, um, or anything of that nature. Um, and there are, uh, another piece to this puzzle that staff has looked at, um, was, uh, parking counts. And there's, uh, actually, uh, some additional information that the applicant was able to provide after I had, um, published the report, that we'll get to in, in a final couple of slides that show some numbers there. Um, staff also looked at corresponding uses. Another thing that we take into consideration is, uh, peak times of use. And from observation of our existing breweries, uh, the, the peak occupation, um, or usage times for those begin, um, after the typical working day at, uh, five PM. And, um, from a cursory review of the immediate area, the building directly behind this, uh, site, um, closes. That business closes at five PM. The one across the street closes at six PM, and that is a, a fairly common, uh, timeframe for these industrial uses to begin to close. So there is, um, uh, a surplus of public parking available, um, at the busiest times that would be used by this use. Uh, similarly, it is, uh, a use that can service the, um, local area. Uh, so at a lunch timeframe, since there is a kitchen, um, it's a use where staff anticipates that a lot of existing users or existing, uh, employees in the area, um, would be able to, um, easily walk, um, and access the site, instead of getting in their cars and driving out into, um, other locations. If we go to the next slide. Um, there's a mu- much lengthier, uh, attachment that goes through a variety of different, uh, goals and policies from both the specific plan, the general plan, urban design element, et cetera. So, uh, that's within your attachment, if you want to look at more. Uh, but this, uh, specific goal, I thought, uh, did correspond to this project very closely. Uh, within the West Pico Quarter specific plan, uh, goal three C is to allow for the intensification of commercial and industrial districts to maintain economic stability. Um, and we found this to be consistent with that, um, allowance within the West Pico Quarter, uh, specific plan to, to allow for, uh, repurposing and intensification of, of an existing building. If we could go to the next slide. So staff's recommendation is, uh, that the planning commission determine, determine the project to be categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA exemption, uh, fifteen three oh three, uh, class three C of conversion of a, a small structure, and adopt, uh, resolution PC twenty dash zero one three, approving the entitlements that were referenced herein. Um, and my next slide is, uh, ready to move on to staff questions. But as I mentioned, I did append to the end of this some additional information, so I'll just touch on that quickly as well. Um, if we could move to the next slide. Um, so I provided this, uh, map graphic to the applicants, um, and this generally falls within three hundred feet. On the left side, we're closer to two hundred feet in distance, um, and in the far right corner, we're at, uh, about three hundred and forty feet. So generally falling within that range of what we look for, of, uh, for offsite parking of being available within three hundred feet. And as I've noted on the, the side, there are seventeen marked stalls at this parking lot. Um, at that bend, there's commonly, even though they're unmarked, commonly parallel parked three additional cars. So there's typically, uh, capacity for twenty cars in the parking lot, and, uh, on the, the surface streets, parking for just over a hundred cars. Uh, and that's based off of twenty feet per car. So, um, I used our JIS tools to measure, um, gaps, um, not including curb breaks or, or, uh, drive aprons. So if there was a seventy-foot stretch of solid curb, that houses three cars. Um, so the one hundred estimate is fairly conservative here. Why there's so much here is partially because of that park, um, that you have development only on one side, um, so you have a significant amount of public parking around that lot. Um, and secondarily, there's a significant amount of buildings in this area that provide no parking. Um, and so there are no curb cuts and, and no provided off-street parking by some of these buildings. Um, and so the, the public availability of parking is pretty high in this immediate vicinity. Uh, if we could go to the next slide. So this is a, a table that I requested the applicants to, um, complete from observations to give us a, a better picture of weekday and weekend counts. And you can see that, uh, the numbers do, as would be somewhat expected, drop on the weekends, um, Saturday and Sunday, um, and are higher during the weekday. Um, and while there is like a pretty high usage of the parking lot, the public availability and, uh, cars parked on the street is less than fifty percent. The highest, um, percentage that we had there was forty-two, again, out of just over a hundred, so about a forty percent usage rate being the highest observed in, uh, this period of time. Um, I did note on the right as well, uh, from visiting the site, there are time restrictions on all these side streets, but not within the parking lot. Within the parking lot, uh, we have, um, several vehicles that were observed, uh, to have been essentially stored at this lot. So, um, staff is, is com- there is additional availability of parking here, and would be pursuing, should the planning commission approve this project, would be pursuing, um, uh, regulating those hours with our Public Works Department initiating that. Um, and that would be, that would be, uh, seen by, um, Planning Commission as well at a, a future time with, uh, all under planning works, or Public Works, pardon me. Um, so those are just some additional, uh, data that I wanted to share with you, and I think that that can conclude staff's presentation at this time, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Um, does anyone have any questions for staff? Uh, Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, I do. Uh, Jonathan, well done. Um, nice to see this project come along, uh, also went through Design Review, and it's gonna be, uh, great to see, uh, once it's built. I do have questions about the two things, uh, the parkway there, um, along the, in south side of the property at, uh, Los Malinos, there is, um, there's a parkway strip now. Is that, um, is that owned by the city? Is that right-of-way?
It is, it is, correct.
Okay, and what have we worked out with the applicant regarding the maintenance, uh, irrigation, et cetera, of that landscape strip?
Yes, they, that is something that would fall under their requirement for, for maintenance. Um, we, we actually have within our general landscaping code, um, a, a portion that indicates that any adjacent right-of-way landscaping is the responsibility of the property owner for maintenance, that the exception being that there are, um, longstanding trees that, that the city does maintain. Uh, but this, um, parkway area would be their responsibility for maintenance.
Okay, and, um, currently, it's concrete, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So how are we going to ensure that that plant material, it has adequate irrigation and drainage?
Uh, so that's, I mean, that's gonna be something that, obviously, the irrigation plans are something that get reviewed by, uh, Pat Murphy. Uh, depending on the type of irrigation, sometimes like long-term irrigation may not be required. Uh, I don't know the, the specifics for the, uh, Mexican feather grass that they're proposing here, whether full-time, uh, or long-term irrigation would be required. Uh, I would rely on Pat to make that determination.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Um, yeah, I'm assuming that is the feather grass, but the symbol is different than the key. Uh, we, we showed the symbol elsewhere on the, on the plan. It's round, it looks similar, but these are kind of misshapen, they look a little, just want to make sure that was in fact the, the Mexican feather grass as shown in the elevation, the rendering. Okay. Um, and then there was a red curb there, as you may recall, uh, past discussion in Design Review. There was discussion with the applicant about a former owner who had gone in and painted a portion of the curb in front of the structure red to prohibit public parking. Has that been addressed?
Uh, so I have communicated with Public Works, and I guess that has been confirmed, that that is not, um, one of the indicated locations of no parking allowed, uh, because Public Works does track every single location where red curbing would be, um, and they indicated that they would, uh, be removing that. I, I can, I cannot confirm yet if that was done already.
Okay. And then it's great to see the, um, the sidewalk wrap around all the way. And where it terminates, are, are they gonna connect somewhere, or are they just gonna terminate it at the property line? The new sidewalk around by the, on, by the windmill on, um, on Caia Valle?
Yeah, it would just, uh, it would just terminate at this point. Um, initially, the applicant said that it was, uh, stretched to be landscaping, um, but engineering, after observing that there was room for, for a four-foot minimum clearance, um, and given that there is, um, you know, a, a use of parking in this area, et cetera, did, uh, they installed that sidewalk.
Okay, will they be adding, the plans aren't clear on this, but it looks like, just being out at the site, it looked like there was room for, um, maybe deliveries there? Is there gonna be an apron introduced, or is it gonna be a solid curb?
On, uh, the, so currently, I'm looking at, um, the landscaping slide.
Okay.
Are you referring to the top portion of the site along Caia Valle?
Yes.
There's an existing apron there, and that existing apron would remain.
So they're I'm talking at the, uh, rear of the side where the, um, where the, um, windmill is, along the back, so it'd be, it would be the east, be the north side of the, of the property.
Correct, yeah, the north side. There, so there is an existing, um, the kind of delivery area at that location, as well as an existing parking spot, and there is an existing, uh, curb cut, uh, at that location, and that, that's proposed to remain.
Okay, so the sliding door is gonna be where the deliveries are, are made?
Uh, correct.
But there will be improvement there, so there'll be contiguous, um, pedestrian access all the way through, all improved, all brand-new, and it'll just terminate at the property line?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Brown, questions for staff?
No, actually, for Jonathan, uh, on the stored car, the car, the street, there is a city ordinance in existence. Any public street and park, public parking lot, unless otherwise signed, and has otherwise signed, is limited, parking is limited to seventy-two hours in the act of that subject to tell. So you could enforce storage in that parking lot right now, or could enforce it through, or you could, or anybody else, so.
Okay, Commissioner Rulon?
Uh, yes, um, looks like, uh, Commissioner Blackwell covers those, uh, issues I have questioned, but I, I want to further explore that. Um, most of my comments, or overall, I like this project. I like it a lot, um, because of the architectural character. And it also, um, added, uh, as a recognizable landmark for this neighborhood. But my comments on the, the improvement to the public right-of-way. Uh, start from Caia de los Malinos. All those parkways, once we converted them into landscaping, it appears that, um, that there's one existing tree, that's a Queen Palm, right? The per landscape plan, plan, uh, the applicant adds another tree at about, um, the end of the lot where the property line extends, extends into the public right-of-way. If we ask for public, if we ask for street trees for approximately one tree per twenty-five feet, I see that there's a lot of space, we can add a few trees there. For example, between the existing tree to the curb cut, we can probably have another two trees. And between the existing tree to the proposed new tree, that distance is about forty feet, we can add another tree there. So I'd like to see more trees there. I, I don't know if, I, I heard that our Public Works doesn't like maintaining new, new, more street trees, I'm not sure. So I want to find out why we, you know, is there anything preventing us from having more street trees on Caia de los Malinos? That's, that's my first question. The second question is on Caia Valle. Uh, it's nice to have that sidewalk to wrap around the building and to continue on Caia Valle. But the existing curb cut is going to prevent the people from, prevent, um, this sidewalk to be accessible, um, because it has a it has a crosscut, the grade. Um, I, I wonder if we can do a, a roll-up curb that allows delivery truck to climb up the curb at the same time to allow the sidewalk to be used by, for accessibility. And then also, that, the last parking spot on Caia Valle, I, I record in cruising to the public, public walk, the public sidewalk. If that's the case, then that may pose some, some issue for the accessibility, or, or, or the public sidewalk in general. And I wonder if there's any way to make sure that, uh, a parked car does not hang over the public sidewalk there. Now, that's my comments. Other than that, I like this project.
Commissioner, where did you get question, answers to your questions?
I, I didn't respond. I wasn't sure if that was a final comment or for discussion purposes, or if that was a question.
I know there was one question, I think, regarding the street trees, um, uh, that I, I didn't know, uh, if you could address or not.
Sure, I can comment on that, uh, a bit. Um, up at that top corner, uh, this landscape plan doesn't show everything in detail, but, um, if you refer to this, the site plan, you'll see, uh, a little bit more detail up there. All of, um, the existing utilities are at that location in that top triangle. Um, so there's some limitations on, on landscaping in that triangular area at the top of the site plan there. Um, I, I'm sure that if there is room for an additional tree, that the applicants would likely be amenable to that. Um, but given the, the spacing requirements from utilities, I'm not sure that that can be accomplished. Um, and, and I would have to, as far as the, the other item of consideration, uh, unfortunately, I'd have to defer to engineering, um, on whether a roll-up curb is something that they would, um, allow for. I, I wouldn't be able to answer that, um, on my own, um, since that's not a standard that I would be, um, familiar with.
Um, I have a couple of questions, too. Um, one is, uh, I noticed in the staff report, it talks about, um, there's gonna be some new roof equipment, but you didn't require it to be, um, shielded, because it was gonna be on, uh, like, the backside of the elevation. But I didn't, I couldn't find anything in the plans, um, uh, that I thought showed where that equipment was and what it was gonna look like. Uh, maybe you could bring up, um, uh, the plans or one of the, uh, uh, one of the images and point out where that roof equipment's going to be?
Sure, let's, if I could have, um, Brian, would you Brian, would you mind going to the slide that has proposed elevation Calle Valle?
Standby.
Actually, while that's coming up, I'll ask another question.
You have the slide number. Sorry, you have a slide number, Jonathan?
Sure, that is, it's page number 63. Oh, sorry, you just have the slides. I believe it's slide number eight. Great, okay. This is an imperfect view. Part of how, I actually hadn't really discussed the rooftop equipment in too much detail at design review. But something that they, that I caught while they were doing concurrent submittal through a building plan check, obviously, any applicant can do that at their own risk. And so I did recognize that there was some rooftop equipment in that location. That's kind of where I brought about the condition language for this. So from this elevation, again, being kind of the, what you'd see from the intersection, the rooftop equipment is actually not visible from this perspective. So it would be hidden behind the ridge, so it's on the backside of that ridge. And we don't have a great elevation of that because that building is about five feet from the building behind it that is adjacent and runs almost identical length. So the rooftop equipment would be facing the roof of the building behind this one. And given that, I, staff felt that, you know, creating some kind of a screening mechanism, adding more bulk, would only make it more recognizable since it's already in kind of a low-visibility location. And Brian, if you go three more slides forward to the one that indicates parking at the bottom? Okay, so from this slide, I don't have my mouse, but you can see that building and it's that left-pitched elevation that faces the building to the rear. Thank you, Brian. So that's the location of where that rooftop-mounted equipment would be. There's two vents that would be located on that pitched portion of the roof.
So it's just, it's vents, it's not air conditioners or something?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think that's my only question. Commissioner Blackwell, did you have another question?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Wu drew my attention to that rear parking. And Jonathan, can you confirm our standard parking? Anybody know here, is it nine by 18? Are those our required dimensions? I really have standard, you only have one size. I can't recall what it is offhand.
Yeah, so there, well, we actually have a standard parking dimension called up for residential, that's nine by 19. And then engineering has technical standards that are, it's not codified, but it's their reference. And that's actually eight and a half by 18 for parking stalls in commercial areas.
Okay, so we have the width at that stall to the north on Calle Valle. The lines shown in the site plan, one is 18 feet long. The one closest to the sidewalk, right to the property line, scales at 15 feet on all their sheets. So, you know, that tells me that, you know, we're going to be pretty limited on what we can park there. And it's not, and it also tells me it's not a standard stall. So you say there's no codified standard. But how can we call it a parking stall if it doesn't meet our, what is it, a policy? It doesn't even meet that. So how can we even call that a parking stall?
Yeah, that's a very good question, and that's, frankly, this is something that I all, I made a mistake on. I included the parking stall as one of the requested encroachments, and then I removed that, referencing again back to this dimension, calling out the 18 feet. And obviously, as you just noted, that's only for one of the dimensions, not for both. So that was, that's a mistake by me to not have referenced that as one of the requested encroachments, was for that parking stall. So they, the full dimension of the parking stall, something that would be requested as part of that encroachment permit.
Looks like they might be able to get it if they squeeze it. I just don't, I'm not clear on what's happening up against the structure there, but possibly. Yeah, to Commissioner Wu's point, yes, that would be a problem with that apron inaccessibility. They're already going to be improving it, now they're going to be subject to those standards anyway, right?
Yeah, so there's, what they would be able to do with the building division is, well, this is something that falls under a combination, building and engineering. They can request a waiver for, in this case, for like an up-and-around when there is existing development. They'd have to provide that rationale to the building division of why that stretch would not provide the complete accessibility. That's something that occurs during, you know, the building plan check process. That's definitely, you know, an area that I could review with Public Works. Again, the solution, well, I think it's a very good one as presented by Commissioner Wu to do a roll-up curb. I would have to conform with Public Works whether there is any concern there. So I don't know if we can potentially craft some kind of language, if that's some of the direction that you'd like it to go, that gives an element of discretion to the city engineer. Just because I do feel uncomfortable confirming without someone from Public Works being able to comment on that currently.
Understood, but we could condition the sidewalk in the roll-up curb, correct? As a condition?
So how I would recommend that be approached, yeah, is that we indicate the preference for that, but final design to be approved by the city engineer in case there is something unforeseen on my side that would need to be addressed.
Okay. Okay, and then last question I have, Jonathan, is the, when are we going to see? I'm sorry, I have a question comment. When are we going to see the sign program?
So there's, in this instance, no sign program is proposed. The reason being that they are proposing less than four signs and less than 64 square feet of sign area. So while we are, we've been kind of accustomed to seeing sign programs more regularly, since this does fall outside of our architectural overlay zone, it would only be triggered to have a sign program if they exceed three signs. So four or more signs would trigger that master sign program requirement, and a request above 64 square feet in total signage would trigger a discretionary sign permit. But they're not at this time proposing that. Should they change their, the direction of the signs that they want, they would have to come back before they could get any administrative signs to install anything that exceeds those thresholds for signs or 64 square feet.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is because on, at the intersection there, Calle de los Molinos and Calle Valle, they've got a sign shown in their elevations. It's kind of attractive. I think it lends to the, you know, the industrial farmhouse design you described, and I like it. The problem is that the, they put a specimen tree there, and it's a strawberry tree. They're showing it in the landscape, on the landscape sheet as a multi, but they're not calling it a multi. They're calling it a low-growing shrub, where they've called out standards and multis on their other, on their other trees. You know, the preference, you know, is to have this tree do what it's supposed to do, of course, and not keep it topped, because that sign is located below the peak, so it's somewhere between seven and 10 feet above grade. So that tree's going to be growing in the 36-inch box, or whatever they propose. It's going to be almost up to the bottom of that sign anyway when they plant it. So, you know, it's a 36-inch box, that thing's going to be six feet tall. And in a year, it's probably going to be covering the sign, once it gets established. So we don't want to get into, you know, this situation where they're cutting the top off it, and then it becomes another topiary, like we saw on another project, you know, and it starts to look odd, and it is a focal point. You know, it's really the first thing you see at that corner. It's a very attractive tree, it's a nice red trunk, if they do a multi, but it's going to block their sign. So they're not, we're not looking at a sign program, we're not weighing in on the sign program, but we do have a sign shown in the elevations. So I thought I'd address that. I'm not sure exactly how we would do this. I don't want to see the tree go away, because whatever, that's a great place for a tree, and it's already, you know, a project that's, you know, got some deficiency in the landscape department, if you will, so.
Tree for the sign, quick, sacrifice the tree.
Sacrifice the tree? Do I have any other votes? So we're going to lose a tree, so they can have a little sign there? Or do they want to reconsider the placement of their sign, maybe come back with another, something else?
Yeah, you know, I don't, that's not an element that staff has reviewed, given the parameters. But I think that what we have, obviously, is like a landscape plan. And as always, plans that are approved through any hearing process be substantially modified without approval by the city. So what we could look at, you know, I think a logical solution that could be discussed with the applicant is even consideration of some form of a freestanding sign, because we already have that wall feature there. So potentially even the edge of the wood paneling that's used as the enclosure could be retrofitted if it was not built yet, obviously, but like from the exhibit looking at into a sign, where then we have, obviously, low-growth plants in front of that, so they should still have visibility in. And then that's something that they wouldn't have to worry. I'm sure that is going to be something they're also concerned about, is having landscaping blocking their sign. So potentially, a solution like that solves both problems.
Okay, yeah, you hit a good point, because the specimen trees become part of their approved exhibit. Low-growing stuff slides through all the time, not a big deal, but that's a big deal, because it's going to block their branding. So if they're not here to talk about it, which is, you know, we've done very well with this format, it's just one time when it would be great to have the applicant present, so we can have that discussion and maybe resolve it here, but we have, we don't. So we're going to have to approve it the way it is. They're going to have to roll the dice on whether or not they lose visibility or come up with a different design, right? For their sign.
That would be accurate there. You know, like if we're approving the location and type of trees, you know, the expectation certainly is not to have tops trees.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Kozinski?
Yeah, Jonathan, I want to commend the applicant for putting this together. It looks like an incredible plan for a very small space. I, the only thing I was, that jumped out at me was currently, the curb is, behind the parking spaces is red, it's a fire lane. And I was trying to see, you know, the fire department obviously looked at this, but if you park cars there, how are the, how are the firemen getting through to the main tasting bar area? Where are they parking their truck? Has that been discussed at all?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. So that, a couple pieces. One, that red curving along Los Molinos actually will be removed. It's shown in the street view, but that was something that was reviewed by Public Works and is not an approved red curb area, like we've just discussed. Typically, what the fire department does is they just have to have access to pull their hose 50 feet. So if they can access the building within 50 feet, in this case, they would be accessing that from the streets. They would just pull their hose directly from the street, and given the smaller size of the parcel, and that they have direct street access, they would accomplish that from the right-of-way.
Okay, it just looked very tight, but, all right.
Thanks, and Jonathan, do we have any public comment on this item?
We did not receive any public comments. I did receive one inquiry from someone within this park regarding the subject of parking, and I responded to that inquiry and asked if they would like to provide an opinion or comment. And they did not provide an opinion or a comment, they just said, "Thank you for the information." I have not received any additional public comments beyond that one inquiry.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing and open it up for any additional planning commission discussion. Commissioner Wu?
Yes, Jonathan, you haven't answered my question about the street tree in Calle de los Molinos. Because I wonder, what is the typical spacing between street trees? Right now, I'm looking at the landscaping plan, are two trees on Calle de los Molinos. That's the one that's close to the building corner. The other one to the left and the bottom, that's appear to be the new tree. Did you review that with the landscape consultant? Did you review that with our Public Works? What's the reason why it cannot have more trees here?
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Sorry, I misunderstood your question earlier and had responded to the palm tree on the northern side of the site and was sidetracked by that location. I misunderstood that you're referring to this curb cut. Typically, you know, I would, staff is going to look at our standard street tree requirement, which is one per 25 feet. And so I, you know, I think that that is the logical spacing that we would be expecting, is every 25 feet. And we, through the design review process, did ask them to install another queen palm in the parkway, which they've done currently, there's only one there. And so they responded to that design review comment. But, you know, we could look at installing another tree. That isn't something that we had pushed them for, just for the fact that we checked off, if you will, the initial requirement that we had asked of them. So it's not something that is, was ruled out, it just wasn't specifically explored to have a third tree in that location.
Okay, well, thank you. The current distance between these two trees is about 40 feet. And from the existing tree to the curb cut, that's probably about 50 feet. And we can easily accommodate another two trees if we use 25 feet of spacing. Thank you.
Let's see, I did want to say, I think, overall, I think this is a great project. This is just the kind of thing that the general plan calls for in Los Molinos, the Los Molinos area. So I think the applicant's to be congratulated for coming up with kind of, you know, kind of mailing it, I think, for the Los Molinos area. I will, just kind of as an observation, when we were doing the general plan, there was a concern amongst the industrial areas in that area that talked about, because the residents that were sort of right up on the edge, we were talking about even allowing some more residents up on the edge, they're already concerned about complaints from non-industrial uses. And while this is certainly an industrial use, because they have an additional restaurant, I don't know if that means there might be some concern on the parts of the other industrial uses that maybe this area is changing or something. I don't think it is, and I don't think it should. But it just might be a heads-up to the applicant that that concern might be expressed to them by some of the other industrial uses around there. Though I don't see a problem, because the primary use of this is clearly industrial. I did want to cover though, condition of approval 7.26, which talks about railing, and that trays and drinkware and flatware won't be placed on that railing. I guess it's the one right next to the sidewalk there. From what I could see, that's a six, a flat six-inch-wide railing, which is pretty easy to put glassware and stuff on. I'm wondering if we should look at a slight change to that design to make it round, or thinner, or something, where it's just not practical to put things like that. If the rule is we can't put stuff on there, then why not design it so we can't put it on there?
Yes, that was, pardon me. That was the intent of that condition, and that is something that Public Works discussed with the applicant and would be reviewed through the construction drawings. So that design, that's essentially... So that design, that's essentially to allow staff to enforce that design within the construction drawings is the purpose of that condition.
I apologize, Jonathan, could you just say the last couple sentences? I had a sudden earbud failure, my batteries ran out. Just couldn't quite last the whole meeting, so I just need the last 30 seconds.
Sure, I was just indicating that Public Works has discussed that piece with the applicant and that they were amenable to having a more rounded design, even though that, you know, that discussion didn't make its way into updated rendering. So that just allows staff to enforce that intent through the construction drawing process and will ensure that the detail that is signed off at the construction drawing phase, again, should the project be approved, we would ensure that detail does meet the intent of that condition to not allow, you know, patrons to set things on that railing. The concern from engineering being just that we wouldn't want to have glass or, you know, like should things fall or break, that railing being so close to the right, to the public sidewalk, we wanted to prevent that type of condition. So that is a detail we'd be enforcing at construction drawings.
Okay, so that is, so we don't have to put in a condition for that, engineering is going to see that that's changed.
Correct.
Okay, great. Uh, let's see, Commissioner Blackwell, did you have something else to discuss?
Yes, I did, yes, I did. You got me thinking about that railing. Gosh, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so are we going to, Jonathan, did you say you were going to look into putting an extra two trees in that right of way there?
I did not comment on a specific number, you know, that was something that I think is on the table for discussion with the planning commissioners. We would need to reference a specific direction in the conditions. If there's, you know, typically, again, when I'm reviewing plan checks, if they're with our standard of 25 feet, if we have 65 feet typically, this is an instance where I'm not rounding up, typically I would round down because of just getting into a condition where we could have fairly tight trees. So the number is something that can be a part of the planning commission discussion and we can certainly update conditions to incorporate whatever number you think is appropriate there.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if this is going to be another Public Works issue that's addressed and just a standard that we apply to all improvements like this. Are the queen palms on the approved, San Clemente approved street tree list?
So the queen palms, kind of where we came to that direction is, it came out of design review. We actually have a specific tree that was recommended within the West Pico Quarter Specific Plan and the applicants utilized that tree, but because the context along the entire frontage of Los Molinos was queen palms, that was the specific request of the subcommittee to replicate that.
I see. Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's all I have.
Okay, I don't see any further discussion, is anyone interested in making a motion or discussing further?
Nobody else want to make a motion tonight, you want me to hit them, read them?
Yeah, you're on a roll.
I can jump in there and make it, but. You got it?
Go ahead.
Okay, so great, I'll make a motion that we approve conditional use permit CUP 19-447 and minor architectural permit 19-448, minor conditional use permit 20-054 and administrative encroachment permit 20-0161, 15, at 151 Cae de los Molinos, the Los Molinos Beer Company and Tasting Room. This is a request to remodel and repurpose an existing warehouse building into a microbrewery and restaurant with the light industrial area of the West Pico Quarter Specific Plan to include a facade remodel, the sale of beer and wine onsite and outdoors, an offsite parking lease agreement with the city at the Cae Monito Parking Lot and the acknowledgement of a minor existing encroachment into the public right of way.
Motion by Blackwell?
I'll second.
Second by Brown, I will call the roll, Commissioner Kozinski?
Excuse me, can I interject? I'd like to amend this. I'd like to make a motion amendment to add a condition that on Cae de los Molinos, we add street trees to maintain 25, 25 feet spacing.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'm okay with the amendment and I can second that, I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and add that to your motion?
I think he wants a vote on that, on the amendment.
Yeah.
All right, fine, let's vote on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Is this the amendment you're saying, hey, the street tree spacing has to meet the city's ordinance?
Yes.
Might not be?
Yes.
You're just restating the ordinance.
Well, that was the question before, that's what I thought before when I asked Jonathan that. I didn't know if it was just something that was going to be handled by Public Works as a matter of function, but because Commissioner Wu identified that we did not meet that criteria, he's felt compelled to call it out into the condition, so, I mean, it doesn't, it's going to be the same either way.
I prefer it to be more specific and since we have a motion and a second, let's just proceed to the vote.
Okay.
So my motion stands with an amendment to add a condition to meet the city's street tree requirement of 25 foot spacing along Los Molinos.
I seconded your motion, but what Fisher Wu has called for is another motion and with you as second, we have to vote on that.
So now we're voting on that second motion, which is in addition, which is an amendment to your, to your motion. So that's what we're voting on, the amendment. Commissioner Kozinski? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rulin votes aye, measure passes five to one. So now we'll vote on the original motion by Commissioner Blackwell to, for the various permits. Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rulin votes aye, passes unanimously.
Fantastic, congratulations.
Congratulations to the applicant. Our next item, 8F, is zoning amendment 20-069 massage ordinance. Looks like staff is requesting that we continue this item to our planning commission meeting of July 8th, 2020, is that correct, Gabriel?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to that effect?
I move that we, let's see, continue this item until July 8th, 2020.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall, Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rulin votes aye, passes unanimously, it is continued. Next item, we have completed our new business already, item 10 is old business, we have none. Item 11, reports of commissioners and staff, does anyone have any reports?
Yes, Commissioner Rulin, I do, yes.
Mr. Blackwell?
So I earned a mister, thank you.
That's cool.
Better than misses, I guess. I, I, it's after eight, so I think that happens to the best of us. You hit 40 and then everything after eight is just a mystery. Or 50 or whatever, I can't remember. The thing I'd like to put out for consideration by the commission is a new topic for a study session, and I touched on this earlier. And it came up when, one day, I was over at Target and I noticed that Target, well, we all know, there's been a lot of activity there, the sports park, parking, discussions that happened, initial development, the dividing of the lots, you know, the monument signs, you know, there's been a lot of activity. So I was most interested when I saw a online and phone pickup system installed there that compromised four parking stalls, so they put up, there's infrastructure there and the way it works is, you know, you order online and, or call in, I'm not sure exactly, I think you can do both, and you show up in your car and you stage, or you drive in and somebody comes out and delivers your groceries, so there's a wait time for the representative to come out of the establishment to deliver your items. So it's got to thinking about this and how, you know, things are kind of changing, you know, the way people shop, it's not uncommon anymore to shop that way or shop online and have brought to your house, that's becoming more common than the old fashioned way of walk, actually walking to the store. But I thought about the discussions that took place and as a planner myself, I thought about, you know, the importance of parking and how that's a big factor when you're going to development like that, your parking count's done and there's, a lot of energy is put into that. So I did inquire with staff about it and there was some discovery done and turned out that there's some more discussion necessary with the owner and so things are being worked out permitting wise. But this is something that was just done and so that discussion continued with our planning director, Gabriel, and he noted other situations such as EV parking, other types of, other ways that parking has been changed or parking design has been changed. And our current parking requirements, as this got touched on earlier today, we have one size parking stall, we don't have ratios here, we don't do compact, we don't do, you know, we just don't. And so it seemed like something to be worthy of discussion and staying ahead of it instead of being reactive, to be proactive. So for example, say this concept takes off for Target and they didn't say anything to anybody and suddenly there's queuing happening like we would see at a drive-through. And now parking is taken out of circulation, not just the four that have been utilized for this little system they've got, but the three or four or 10 that are blocked now by a line of cars waiting in the queuing line because that's become a popular mode of shopping. Then we have an issue, what if they're at max capacity in parking already? We just subdivided the property, we just took parking out of the surplus there. So anyway, that was a long way to say, it seemed like a good discussion to revisit. Other cities are doing that, they're looking at the way that parking standards are applied, the way people are using parking. And I thought it was worthy, actually it was a suggestion of our city planner to bring it in as a study session and I thought, I think he relied on me to bring it to your attention, so I'm doing so.
Yeah, parking, you know, changes, we may, these may be temporary changes, they may be permanent, but my only concern was, I know that we've got some stuff on study sessions lined up and staff time in putting together a study session. But Gabriel, if you think it's, you know, it's something that is worth the staff's time and maybe moving stuff around, then I, you know, personally, I don't have any problem with it. It'd be useful.
And it could be a short item, we could do two in one. And especially if they're sandwiches served. But I mean, it could be just, you know, what are trends in parking design now? What's new, what's happening? Again, instead of being reactive, we're more proactive in our thinking, you know, we just start to plant some seeds.
Gabriel, do you, have you got any, any observations about staff's bandwidth?
Yes, thank you Chairman, yeah, we have had this conversation about parking and maybe it's repurposed or pickup. So, you know, I think it's worth the study session and to get the input of the commission to understand, you know, what commission concerns could be for the future, if it expands. You know, from staff's perspective, we were seeing, a lot of this is being done without asking staff, right? So as far as the target, you know, what staff was considering was making a modification administratively to the site plan. But there might be times where the planning commission think it, thinks it's significant and should be reviewed at the planning commission level. So I think it's worth having that discussion to figure out, well, maybe what's that threshold that planning commission feels that it would be necessary to review these instances where parking is repurposed or takeout or electric vehicle parking? And so we could do that, I'll put it on our TFA. If you ever seen our 10 to the future agenda that's in your packet, we do identify items that we would have future site sessions on, so we'll do that. So I'm not sure if we would have this for the next meeting in July 8th, but we would have that at a future one for sure.
Okay, no, I mean, when you can work it into your schedule, I think, I think we want to be flexible with your schedule too because staff is, you know, has their own pressures right now, so. Anyone else want to chime in on that? Bart, did you have something?
No, I think Gabriel actually had an announcement to make.
Yeah, Chairman, members of the planning commission, I wanted to announce that Jonathan, he's still on the line. And so I want to announce that he is taking on a new role at the city. He will no longer be with the planning division, but he will be working through the city manager's office in economic development capacity with the city. And so I just wanted to let you know about that. We're used to his presentations, he does a really good job with the planning division. I'm going to miss him having part of our team, but he's not going too far away. He'll be in the city manager's office, working with businesses. He will take on still some responsibilities that are related to planning and will continue to work on the Miramar development. You know, more recently, if you watched the city council meeting yesterday, the council voted to relax requirements for outdoor dining and retail related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so, you know, I could talk more about that later, but, you know, so Jonathan, you know, really had that initial idea and it actually came to fruition. So Jonathan's on the line, maybe he could talk about other things that I haven't mentioned yet about his new role at the city.
We're going to miss you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Fortunately, like as Gabriel said, I'm not going too far away, just a different office. So, you know, I think that the position is one that the city has been lacking for about a decade. We had someone about 10 years ago that did collaborate with our, you know, different business organizations and provided that service, but we haven't had that really since redevelopment went away. And yeah, it's been kind of a goal and on the radar of city management and the council recently. And now is an opportune time, given that we're in a stage of reopening local businesses and it's also an opportunity, even though it's, you know, a tough time for these businesses, an opportunity to try some new things, as Gabriel was mentioning and I'll be collaborating with him on that one piece of looking at, you know, temporary solutions to help these businesses thrive as they start to reopen. And then, you know, as we move beyond COVID, there'll be other opportunities to kind of expand this economic development position and things to look at. I have to start to get into some public-private partnership opportunities and discussions that would, again, certainly overlap with community development and Gabriel and planning and all of you on the planning commission. So, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities and it gives us maybe a proactive tool at the city to look at some ways that we can bring about some positive change. We have a lot of great applications that come in, but this may be an interesting way to initiate some opportunities moving forward. So I'm excited for the opportunity to keep working with great staff and also to have some creativity in a new, a new way. So thank you all for being so supportive of staff. So thank you all for being so supportive of staff. We definitely appreciate and recognize that aspect of the planning commission. It's been very good working with all of you.
Well, thanks a lot for your good work, great work, Jonathan. You, you would definitely be missed. You know, I'm, you know, sad to see you go. I'm glad you're still with the city at least. I'd like Aaron, who's, who's heading out of town. So, so that makes you better. But, I'm kidding. But, yeah, and it's, just so you, a little bit of history, the general plan advisory committee and the planning commission, when we did the last general plan, had in the general plan an economic development type position like that. And the city council at the time chose, you know, not to do that, and now it sounds like that they are. So it's great that that's, I think it's great that that's happening, particularly at this, you know, with what's going on now. Our businesses, you know, probably need all the help we can give them. So congratulations, and you will be missed in the planning department.
That's right. Here, here.
Yeah. Gabriel, you got to go out and find some more good people, huh?
It's going to be tough.
Yeah, it's rough out there.
It was a pleasure to have you, to have, have the chance to work with you, and you are a very impressive young guy. Congratulations on your move.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, all the best in your, in your new, your new chapter, Jonathan. And I second that. You've done a fantastic job, very well spoken. Your presentations are phenomenal, just solid information. And that's just, you know, it's, it's, it's just been a common thing with this planning team. You definitely have stood out on many of your projects, so wish you well. Know you'll be successful, and I'm sure we'll see you around, City Hall.
He's up in the third floor looking down on everybody.
So thanks so much, Jonathan. Is there anything else for reports of commissioners and staff? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll read that. I move that the next regular meeting of study sessions, planning commission will be held on July 8, 2020, 6:00 p.m. In the council chamber, load of 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California, as the 2017-2020 meetings were previously canceled. So we moved adjourned to, to 8 to 9.
A second. Blackwell?
Motion by Brown, second by Blackwell. Call the roll. Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Chair Rulin votes aye. It's unanimous. We are adjourned. So thank you, everybody.
Bye. Well done.